Again, this isn't particularly a regular meeting, but for the for those of you who are listening, we are conducting our business remotely under the executive order of Governor Charlie Baker. This allows public bodies to conduct their business remotely during this time of a state of emergency. So the, as a committee, we're committed to transparency and our goal today is to, you know, be able to communicate with the public and also to have public feedback. The first item on our agenda is the public comment. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to put that off for the time being. The goal is to have public hearing by email. I do want the superintendent and Representative Ferguson and Senator Goby, if they wish to have anything to say, to have the opportunity to address the committee and the public first, and then we will open it up to to conversation amongst the committee and then we'll open it up to, to the public. So when we do, hold on for one second. So so, I'm sorry, my wife was sending a message about the, the feed. But I don't know what she meant. So what we will do is we will start off with, with chairs opening remarks. Again, this is a, you know, a really difficult time for our community and for our country. I know that we're not going to have all the answers tonight, but hopefully we can, we can start with some information from superintendent. Just hold on for one. Okay, so when we go to, to our public hearing, people can email questions, which will go to me. And that will be, email address will be questions@wrsd.net. So again, that's going to be, which I'm going to share on the screen. Questions@wrsd.net. I ask that people don't send questions yet, that they wait till they hear the presentation. And then as the presentation and the school committee members start asking questions, you can go to that email address and it'll get sent to me to read. All right, so I'm going to first turn the floor over to the superintendent, have him give a discussion and then again to our local representatives. And then we'll go around the school committee for questions, including our student reps. So Daryl, do you want to take the floor?
Sure. First and foremost, thank you all for taking some time this evening to sit in on this, this meeting as Ken said, this is unprecedented. And I also want to thank Representative Ferguson and Senator Goby for sitting in as well. I know they've been in contact with us throughout this entire process. And I appreciate kind of the support that we've gotten and ultimately kind of where they, where they kind of had to push forward around certain issues associated with the closing of school last week. And we greatly appreciate their, their support. So, you know, first and foremost, I really want to thank the staff in the district. You know, they've been working on creating a plan of action to meet the needs of our students moving forward. And I'm very appreciative of their efforts. I also want to thank the families in the district who have taken on this new role during this pandemic. I applaud their efforts in terms of what they're going through right now. And again, this is unprecedented and, you know, we're, we're all, you know, learning as we kind of go through this process. And finally, our administration and support staff. They've been extraordinary in terms of providing a semblance of order for, for this entire process that we've been going through over the past week. And as we kind of move forward with this, you know, I think it's, it's important for us to make sure that we, we remember that we're all trying to do this in a manner that's not typical. As, you know, I said to someone today, you know, we're still used to having that brick and mortar mold. And, you know, I know many of you have the capacity to work from home. And, you know, at one time I thought I was envious of, of that position. But after the past week, you know, I can really see how working at home is a, is a challenge all the way around. So, um, you know, one of the things that, you know, I wanted to talk to you about this evening was the fact that we are, you know, I've had many communications with the Commissioner of Education over the past week and a half, Jeff Riley. And, you know, as we've kind of gone through some of the conversations that we've had, the superintendents and DESE, we're really pushing the superintendent, or excuse me, Commissioner Riley to provide further guidance around what we need to do as a, as a schools, school or schools across the Commonwealth. I'm spending an awful lot of time talking with superintendents from across Massachusetts around how they're working through issues, what they're trying to do. And again, getting thrown into the concept of providing enrichment opportunities, distance learning, online support, you know, all of those types of things are not something that's easily transferred over to, from a traditional model of educating students. And I think Commissioner Riley's done a, a good job at taking our information and processing it. And again, he's dealing with something at a scale that is much larger than what I'm dealing with as a superintendent, and I appreciate his efforts. So, you know, over the past few days, we've been working with the teachers' union around how we move forward and provide support to students in an online environment. So that's another process that we're going through. And we're looking at having communication occur this week. And I know it's happened in some places already, but consistent communication occurred this week with teachers and families so that we have a, a process in place where we have the extended learning activities, the enrichment activities that we need to push forward through. You know, one of the things that I wanted to do is talk about some of the items that the commissioner mentioned in a little more detail. I know I, I shared a brief outline with you this afternoon, but there were some important topics that we, we covered on Friday afternoon. And again, we will probably cover later this week when we have another conversation. So as of today, you know, Kansas and Virginia have already closed all their schools for the year. We, you know, our conversation on Friday, it does not look as though we would be going back to school on the April 6 date. So we have pushed the commissioner to really help define learning activities versus extended learning activities. And what, what needs to happen if this extension continues past a few weeks or, you know, even a month or so. We're, we're really concerned about what we need to do for our students so that they're able to be supported and are able to continue the learning process. So one of the things that we were asked to do was really start planning for a long-term plan of action around what, what we're going to be looking at. You know, if we go longer than April 6. We're also, there have been some challenges around providing support for students who are EL, students who have IEPs, 504s, in terms of accessing the curriculum in a way that's conducive to what their needs are and ultimately in a way that provides them with a support system where they can actually access that enrichment activity. So, you know, I know Christine Smith, our special ed director, she's online. And she's been working diligently with her staff around being able to do this. There's been some guidance that has been provided by the U.S. Department of Education. And again, it's, it's a little, it's a little more flexible than had originally been interpreted. But again, there are some issues associated with how far certain things can go in terms of providing supports or not providing supports. It's really around equal access to education. In terms of what we're looking at for the school day requirement, Commissioner Riley did have the opportunity to make a judgment call on this. And he said that no schools have to go beyond the 185th scheduled day of school. And Rebecca Peterson, tell me if I'm right or wrong, but I believe June 18th is our, our last day right now for 185.
That's 185, yep.
Thank you. But it does not mean that we cannot extend past the 185th day in terms of providing educational services for kids. That's something that we can look at. I can tell you that the, the concept of April vacation was discussed. If we're in this, in a situation like this, we would just roll right through it. And we would have to look at the school committee modifying the calendar in order to do that. The other thing is the commissioner put out some information today in reference to MCAS and, you know, what we're doing or what we do and not have to do. And, you know, right now DESI's postponed the Grade 10 English Language Arts Assessment and also the Grade 3 through 8 English Language Arts Assessment window. So they're going to continue to look at that as dates are either pushed forward or, you know, the calendar is modified. And also the MCAS alt portfolio, this was a big one because we do have students that, you know, they don't take the traditional MCAS. They participate in the MCAS alt portfolio, which is a great deal of work on the part of the children and also the, the teaching staff that, that was to be submitted by April 3rd. But it's, that has been postponed and they're going to reach out to school districts about that. You know, I'd like to give a big hand to Margaret Barton, our head of food service, who took on the role of really reaching out to families who receive free reduced lunch and offered to provide food services for those students this week. And, you know, we'll be doing that again next week. So, you know, she's, she's taken on a huge role in terms of prepping for about 150 students. And the students had, there, someone drive them up to the high school. And they were able to pick up five days' worth of meals. And, and that's a, something that, you know, again, we are taking on, on our own. We, you know, we're not being reimbursed for this by the USDA. USDA has said that they will only reimburse school districts who are at the 50% or higher poverty level. And we're well below that, but I feel as though it would be a disservice to our kids who are home and who typically have the opportunity to have a full meal at school. And without it, I think it, it does make a difference in their lives. So one of the things that Commissioner Riley also mentioned, and he, he said it again today through the superintendent's list serve, is that he'll be sharing a more broad letter to families and staff and communities about where, where the state of Massachusetts is in reference to many of these items that I'm sharing with you this evening. So again, those are the, those are the big items that, you know, I wanted to kind of review with you. I can tell you, Ken had sent me an, an email today and just asked if we were going to have a two-hour delay tomorrow. And tongue in cheek, and I thanked him for that sense of humor since I've, I've not had the best sense of humor over the past 10 to 14 days. And I appreciated that. So I can, and I can easily say we don't have to worry about a snow day tomorrow or a two-hour delay.
All right, so I'm sure a lot of people are going to have questions, myself included. But I want to give an opportunity for Representative Ferguson and Senator Goby. If, I know they have another conference call that they have to get to. It's probably been their, their life the past many weeks. So Kim, Anne, do you have anything that you would like to say?
Sure, I'll jump in first, being brief, and I'm sure Annie will follow right behind me. And I can't say enough, you know, thank you to you, Ken and Daryl and the committee for all the work and support that we've been doing together with you. I mean, the communication has been phenomenal. You're right out in front of it and, and we're all in this together. And I know, we know that, and these certainly are unprecedented times. Anne and I don't have all the answers for you tonight, but we're certainly going to listen and try to do the best we can. I think the superintendent just did a great job kind of summarizing the information that we've also been getting from DESI and from the commissioner. We've been on numerous conference calls, it seems like, calls every day, specifically discussing education-related items, looking at, again, specifics like the concerns about the 112th spending, looking at circuit breaker reimbursement, even issues, you know, like the, the food program that you are sponsoring on your own, which is something I think we all agree had to be done and was another example of the district stepping up. We were just talking about that today, that, you know, we want everyone to save and keep track of their receipts and expenditures because that might be something down the road that we're going to be able to help you with as well, even though we don't meet that 50% threshold. So there are certainly so many things coming at us all at once. Education being one of the top priorities in how, you know, we can rapidly get things up and running and get feedback back to you. You know, and I know that there are a lot of issues with how equity is happening with delivery of services, et cetera, and the online education. So I know that's also a work in progress. But I can't thank you all enough for the cooperation that we've had. And we certainly are right here with you and glad to help in any way. Anne, I know you're right there. Do you have anything else for now?
Sure. Okay, am I, am I back on?
You are.
Okay, all right, thank you. And yes, kind of ditto on what Ken said, thank you to everyone. Also, a real special thanks to Margaret for everything with the kids. That's always an issue, the food insecurity issues that, that kids have. Just because the, the school isn't open anymore, the issues that the kids face with, with some of the home issues. That they, having that food, knowing that they're going to at least get a good meal really makes a difference. And, you know, Kim and I have concerns as well, get concerned about students that, that may not have the greatest home situation. And when we get into areas where people are being forced to stay at home, and now they may be in a, in a home that's probably may not be the best. And so we have concerns, obviously, those are the kind of concerns. I know those are concerns that you share as well. And so the more that we can do and the more that you can get some guidance from DESI, from the commissioner, from the secretary, to make sure that there's some uniformity going on in the schools, it shouldn't be where you have one school district that has the ability perhaps. And, and every kid has, has a computer at, at the ready. We, we know that's not the case everywhere. It's certainly not the case in some of the more rural towns that I serve. So Kim and I have been on daily with sending emails back over to the department. I think poor Jessica is probably really sick of us wanting to say Kim by now. But she's getting back, yeah, she's getting back to us every day. And, and pretty much what we're being told is kind of what you're being told too, is that DESI is working on some of these larger issues. And hopefully we're going to get something much more concrete this week. Because we need it, we all need it, we need this kind of further guidance from them. And they, they should be in the position at this point to come forward with that. Because like you said, Daryl, it absolutely doesn't look like kids are going to be back in school in a couple of weeks. I, I don't see that happening either. So we'll continue to do whatever we can. These conversations that we continue to have, emails, the more information that we get, the more questions you want us to ask, that's fine, we're happy to do it. And I also did want you to make sure that you know that both the Senate and the House have COVID-19 task force, forces that are going on. I know that when we have education questions, we're always making sure that we're circling in Jason Lewis and Alice Peish on those as well, so that they know what's going on in our districts. And I think that that's important, that, that other legislators know what's happening. So that if, if we need, if it, if at some point we need some legislation, that everybody's going to be kind of on the same page with things. So again, thank you very much.
Ken, if you wouldn't mind, I just also wanted to jump in with one additional thing that Anne and I were just talking about this afternoon. We do anticipate in the very near future, some kind of education-related bill or legislation coming forward. I know there's some things being drafted right now. So hopefully, I would say this week, there will be some kind of package or some kind of legislative guidance or issues that we need to deal with, including things like the 112th for regional school districts, that I hope we will be dealing with ASAP. So I just wanted to throw that out, that I know there is some drafting being done right now. Thank you.
Thank you both. So before we turn the questions to superintendent, I did want to see if members had questions in particular for our, our local legislators, because they are going to need to scoot off to another call. One of our members, a member of Lavoie, asked if they anticipate, and this may be too early, but if they anticipate the community needing our buildings for schools, for medical use or for quarantine use in the immediate future, the next few months. Has there been discussion about that? Or is it too premature?
So I, I can let, tell you that working with my colleges, that the cities, that they're being looked at right now, because obviously they have dorm spaces available. The students aren't going back to the colleges. So I've not heard of anything being looked at for the, for the K-12, but absolutely the colleges are being looked at.
Yes, Ken, and I would agree. The discussions that I've been involved with do not involve any of our schools in the district at all at this point.
Thank you. And another question from Member Gustafson was whether there's any information about the SOA that's due in a week from today, has that been officially delayed?
I know there was a proposal about that in one of the bills, one of the, in some of the language in terms of putting that off. I can't say if we voted on that yet, but I know that that would definitely, I would have to look at my notes here at all the bullets that I have about actions we've already taken. But I do know that that was something the commissioner was absolutely very clear on, that those deadlines would not need to be met. Daryl, I'm not sure if you have that in front of you as well, but I know that that was seriously being put off.
So, yeah, thank you, Kim. We, you know, we were told by the commissioner that it was going to be put off, but there was no official word yet from the legislation. You know, again, I think one of the, one of the issues with this is that there were many communities that were still in the process of holding public comment meetings and so forth. So I'm guessing that most districts, and this was something that superintendents didn't even necessarily bring up, but the commissioner had said, you know, we're postponing this. So the issue is, he doesn't have the authority to make the decision across the board. It has to go through, as Kim said, it has to be passed. So he feels as though that's not going to be an issue in the current state that we're in.
Right.
Member Longbeale just pointed out to me that the public listening might not know what we mean by this, but this is the Student Opportunity Act. There was supposed to be a plan submitted to DESE with regards to how we would use the funds that were allocated for the Student Opportunities Act. So that, that's the deadline we're talking about. Is any, so I've been using the chat feature here with our members to, to have questions that they might want to pass along to our legislative, to our representatives. Ruwix asked whether the bill being discussed for funding, would the bill being discussed be for funding only? Or will it circle back to graduation requirements for 2020 and student ability to move up to the next grade for 2021?
So again, you know, I really think we are going to see something hopefully by the end of the week. You know, I was having some discussion today, early this morning, just about things like grading, end-of-the-year grading policy, you know, how we're going to deal with all of that situation. So I think that's part of the mix right now, but I can't, I can't definitively answer that question. But I know that in the mix is all of that type of thing, like promotion, grading, end-of-the-year grades, et cetera, if that helps.
Right, yep.
Okay. So, member God about lists, and I, I agree that to thank both Senator Goby and Representative Ferguson for all the advocacy, we're so grateful for all the hard work that you do for us all the time, but especially the past few weeks. It's, it's great to know that we have representation in Beacon Hill that's responsive to local leaders, responsive to their constituents. And, you know, we appreciate how you work on both sides of the aisle all the time to, for the good of your districts.
Well, thank you for that, and we're, we're only a phone call away.
And, you know, I'd just like to just interject. Both the senator and the representative have been in constant contact with me and have responded whenever I have reached out to them. So again, this is turning into a 24/7, if, it was already, but now it is really becoming a 24/7 job for all of us. And, you know, I do appreciate just how hard they are working as well.
Well, we really do appreciate the cooperation and, and we really are in this all together. So anything we can do, you know, we're more than happy to help. We know that this is a really difficult time for all of us and, and we're trying to all, you know, work on it together and step up. I'll hang out for a little bit longer, but please don't be offended when we have to jump off at quarter of eight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, thank you so much to, to Kim and Anne. So again, the plan that I have is that I want to go around the virtual table we have, essentially in alphabetical order first, for members to speak, you know, actually out loud and not just through me. So I ask that you unmute yourself, ask your question or pass, and then re-mute yourself. And then afterwards, we can, you can send things to me through the chat and I can recognize you to, to speak again. Again, also, I've received one question so far and we'll do public session at, at soon. Again, if you send, I'm going to go back to the email again. So the email address is questions@wrsd.net. This is going to just bounce to my email. If you do have direct questions for the superintendent, I suggest you email him directly. If you do send me an email, I'm going to wait to ask these questions after the school committee goes around, including our student reps. And then please do include your name and your street address in any emails you send. So that's what we normally do for our, our public session as well. Okay, so I am going to go around the, the table and start with Member Ayala, and then it will be Brown and Dennis after that. So again, if you can try and keep your questions to less than two minutes. And, and if someone has asked your question, you can feel free to, feel free to pass. So Melissa, do you want to go first?
Hi, sure. I guess one of my bigger concerns is around students that are on IEPs and 504s and, you know, it's still being worked out. But I just kind of wondering if there's, if Dr. McCall even has any idea what we'll do at the end of the year if we don't continue up the school year? And, and will we meet virtually possibly with the, with the person directing at whichever school the parent needs to meet with? Like, we, like at, at Coaten Elementary, we meet with the, the the vice president, not the vice, the vice principal. And just wondering if we would do that just virtually with the student? I'm just kind of at a loss on how we're going to meet the needs of kids that are on 504s and IEPs.
So, thank you, Melissa. That's, that's probably been one of the more challenging questions that's been asked and it's been thrown around over the past 10 to 12 days by superintendents and educators, not only here in Massachusetts, but across the country. So, you know, there has been some talking. You know, I'll probably allow Christine to, not allow, but, you know, Christine could jump in on this, our Director of Special Education, and talk a little bit. But she and I have been in contact pretty regularly about what we might be able to do moving forward. But again, much of our direction comes from the federal government. And the federal government directs Massachusetts government. Massachusetts, again, is, has some pretty strict rules and regulations around IEPs, 504s and so forth. And, you know, I think one of the things that we have to think about is how to, how to think outside the box during this time. Because this is not going to be a traditional IEP meeting, 504 meeting, annual review, three-year review. We're really going to have to figure out ways to do this, ways to provide, you know, virtual meetings. So we've already talked about how this might work out. We're just looking at the details and kind of the legalities associated with it moving forward. And, and those are the things that I believe Representative Ferguson and Senator Goby have been focused on as well with the commissioner in terms of trying to get some responses directly from DESI around this. Because, you know, one of the things that we need to be careful about is that we have to think about what, you know, happens in one district versus another district and continuity. And, you know, again, superintendents are really looking for consistent methodologies for how we work with students who receive support services. So Christine, you want to jump in as well?
Sure, Daryl, I think that you've said a lot of what I would have said also.
I think that you've said a lot of what I would have said also. Like yourself and your superintendents across the state, special education directors across the state have been meeting with Russell Johnson. And also, I participated in a federal conference call with the DOE regarding the state of emergency that we are in at this time. We are all very concerned that our students are not getting the services that are defined on their IEP. That doesn't, you know, that is the same concern that we have for all of our children who are not getting their entitlement to public school at this time. So I think that we have come up with some pretty amazing creative ideas and some solutions for how we can reach and help our students that are experiencing enrichment activities and what that might look like going forward. But I think that, and I think that in special education, we've already done a lot of accommodating and modifying, so special educators are pretty good at that. What we need to become really good at really fast is doing that through this teleporting way that we are now existing. And I have no doubt that in Wachusett, we will be doing that and doing it extremely well. I think that it's, as we think about the kids that access school in our, in our district, I think that the kids that I'm most concerned about are kiddos that, as the public official said, are not able to access devices or online services because they don't have physical access. But I'm also thinking a lot about our students who won't be able to learn through that modality because they need much more physical prompting or hand-over-hand instruction in order to physically experience a learning task in order to grasp it. So I'm not exactly sure what that's going to look like throughout the state, throughout the nation, throughout the world at this time. So, but we are working on that. As I said, I have a weekly, at least weekly teleconference with all of the directors across the state. I'm getting lots and lots of information from what my peers are doing throughout the state, and I'm sharing that all back with Bob and Daryl, and we're all sort of mulling through it together and trying to figure out what is, what decisions can we make at this time? What are prudent decisions? And are they setting us up for the next best choice to make? Right? Because it's the ever-evolving moment. So I think that you also, Melissa, were asking about timelines and compensatory services, and where are we going when this all ends? And I really wish I had an answer to the, where are we going when all of this ends? But I don't at this point. I guess at some point, I stopped thinking about this moment as a really long snow day or a blizzard kind of situation, and I had to start thinking about this as a really different kind of situation. I just, I can't say, well, in three days, we'll be done with this, and we'll be, you know, back into, and we'll, we'll have to make up what we've missed, and that will mean additional, like, I just can't even get to that. I, I know that what, I know what folks are entitled to, I know what kiddos are entitled to in terms of compensatory service. At some point, your team, your child's team will meet and will discuss what has been missed and what we believe is necessary in order for the child to make the expected progress that was delineated on the IEP. I don't know where that time is going to come from. Obviously, at some point, we're going to bump right into extended school year and have to make choices about extended school year. So what I can say is that our special ed teachers are the consummate professionals. They are a part of our teachers' union. They are desperate to serve our students and to serve them with the professionalism and the heart that they always have had and have always shown our kids. They are leaning in, and they want to do more. We just have to figure out what that more is, how to do that equitably, and how to do that in a way so that, as I said, the next decision we make is setting us up for the next decision also, if that makes any sense, because everything is just developing at one moment.
And Christine, if I can add to that as well, I believe you have a conference call tomorrow with DESI, or all special ed directors do, and, you know, hopefully we'll have some more information pertaining to kind of next steps as well.
That's right, Daryl. And additionally, I meet every morning with what, what we consider in the district, the leadership of special education. So while there may feel like there's a huge void, and I know, I can imagine our families are incredibly stressed with the demands that have been put on them as you try to work from home and have your babies at home with you, and it's just such a moment of crisis that we are all grappling with. I want to encourage our families to reach out to their service provider through email. Definitely reach out to your school leader or to myself if you have concerns that you feel like we can't get, or aren't getting addressed, or you're, or you need some additional support, and we'll see how we can get that support to you or, or figure out the next steps together.
Okay. So our next member is Member Brown. Scott, do you have anything, questions, comments?
Hi. Yeah, my question, I know this is changing daily, it's very fluid, and I'm glad the Superintendent is looking at the 185 rule, June 18th not being our last day. How realistic is that? Is that something that is definitely being looked at right now? And if we did enact that, what would that look like?
So, thank you for that question, Scott. You know, again, because we're, we're still kind of early on in this, in this process, what was nice about what the Commissioner offered up was the opportunity for us to look at this down the road if, if we're in a prolonged, you know, absence from school. So, you know, one of the things we're just, again, this just got shared with us on Friday. So if we could take a look at this, you know, in the next few weeks, what, what might we do if the Governor extends the closure? You know, and as I said, there are already two states that have closed school for the remainder of the year. I believe those schools did end early anyway, I believe they ended in May. So it's, it's a little different from us, but, you know, if we needed to look at the rest of June, that would be something that, that we could definitely, definitely take a look at. And again, I also mentioned the whole concept of April vacation, which that's a, that's going to be one that, again, I believe the Commissioner is just going to make the recommendation that schools just move right over that.
And process-wise, since we do on the calendar as a committee, we will have to vote on that at some, changing the calendar.
Exactly. And that, right, so that would be a recommendation from me, and you would make that, that decision as a, as a committee.
Also, Daryl, on, I know on your report, you mentioned regarding dealing with the teachers' union and getting something in, in play in regarding for the students at home. I am getting quite a bit of parents contacting me, asking when most of the schools are going to be, and the teachers are going to be voluntarily asking, you know, their students to be working on this. Is that, is that being planned?
Yes, Scott, that is being planned. I was actually, you know, I spent a lot of time, end of last week, over the weekend, and much of today, you know, hammering out some details associated with this, but I feel like we're in a good place, you know, we'll, we'll make communication happen this week, you know, with teachers and kids. And, you know, again, you know, I, I really want to make sure that we're in a situation where we have the capacity to kind of, you know, offer this up in as many different venues as possible. You know, when we're thinking about what we can do as a, as a, as a district, you know, we're, our mindset has to be one where we look at this, you know, downstream. So much of the conversation that we've had has been around what we can and cannot do around providing enrichment versus new learning. And that's the, that's the issue that DESI has been, you know, having conversations with superintendents about now for, you know, again, the past 10 to 12 days. You know, when we're looking at what we can do as a, as a district, we have to look at what type of support enrichment activities we can provide for all of our students, you know, our students on IEPs, our students in regular ed programs on 504s, and how best we can support them. So as we move forward with this, you know, our regular ed teachers, our program teachers, our teachers who support our regular ed teachers, our special ed teachers who support our regular ed teachers, they'll be working, you know, together to provide modified versions of some of the assignments that might go out to regular ed students. In programs, we'll have our program teachers working with those students and those families. And it's really around, you know, it's kind of twofold. You know, what we need to do is look at how we can provide support to families, and I think Christine somewhat mentioned this a little bit, but, you know, we have some very needy students that we educate in our schools, and, you know, we have specialists who work with them every day, many specialists, in some cases. And you can't possibly attempt to replicate that at home with one of our, with any of our, you know, parents, unless they're, they have several different specialties associated with educating kids. So we're, we're attempting to really define how that might work, what teletherapy might look like if that happened somewhere down the road, how we're able to communicate with families around different activities they could do with children. So it's, it's really a, it's a multifaceted approach. It's just, we want to ensure that we do it correctly, and we want to ensure that we do it so that if this is something we need to sustain, we're able to sustain it for, you know, the next several weeks, and it's something that is viable and really viable.
Okay. It's just with the social distancing, and the kids really can't get out and socialize, and I'm finding that they, they're really wanting to learn, and they're looking to their parents and saying, what can we do? What can we do? And I know some teachers at the high school are offering guidance to the students, and it's all voluntary, but that's definitely something we should look at in the short term to, to move on that, because, again, with the social distancing, the kids are really bored.
I agree, I completely agree. And, you know, again, I can tell you that, that it's going to be happening this week.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Okay. So Member Dennis.
Thank you. So, you know, this is certainly unprecedented time, and certainly appreciate the tremendous pivot and effort by the administration, by our teachers, and also by, you know, our parents and students. You know, I think it's times like this when oftentimes, rather than waiting for something legislatively to occur, there becomes a point when we try to follow our, our moral compass. And so a great example of that was the decision to make meals available to those students who, who need them, even though they're, in fact, there was nothing that said that the district would be reimbursed for them, given the situation that we're in. But, but we did it, and the administration decided to do it because it was the right thing to do. And, and I certainly applaud that. You know, I guess the comment that I'd make is similarly, in these unprecedented times, sometimes we can't always wait for kind of a legislative direction. And, you know, following, I think, what Member Brown has, has mentioned, I think that there is a tremendous question mark as, as we kind of roll from one week to the next, and every week seems like another chapter, and every couple of days seems like another week, of what can parents and students expect from the district in terms of making education in whatever form that looks like, whether it's enrichment or whatever form that looks like? What can people expect on a going-forward basis? And, and I think that people have an appreciation for that. We may not know the answer long-term, but being able to describe what that could look like, for example, in the next week or the week after that, or we try something and maybe it works and maybe it doesn't, and we move on to something else. You know, I guess the point of it is that I, for one, would, would encourage, either Daryl and the administration, who I know are working very hard, to, to continue to be bold and follow the moral, our moral compass of putting something out there, but also not, I guess, to me, it's, it's more important to provide a direction and being able to, to offer something up that is directional in terms of providing education going forward than it is to be precisely right in how we do it. And, and I think that, it sounds like you have some ideas around that, it sounded like Administrator Smith had some creative ideas around that. I, I think there's a strong hunger in knowing what those are and hearing more about them in the days coming. Thank you.
Of course, Mike, and I, those are great points, and I hear exactly what you're saying in terms of taking those, those bold steps. You know, again, you know, as we've kind of taken these, these, you know, baby steps in terms of moving forward, you know, I can tell you that the conversations that I've been having with, with the teachers' union have been productive. They're ready to kind of move forward with how we can better assist students over the next several minutes, months, if, if that be the case. And, you know, it's really about, you know, one of the concepts that, you know, I, what I've been discussing is really about having teachers provide two kind of touchpoints during the day, so you'd have a morning opportunity where there would be, you know, a chance for teachers to maybe reach out to kids through Power Teacher or through Google Classroom, and just kind of talk about maybe assignments, maybe some questions that families might have, and then, again, give some assignments that students can do during the day, and toward the end of the day, maybe have another touchpoint where teachers kind of look back on some of the things that kids did, ask questions, maybe have some conversations with parents. Again, you know, one of the things that, you know, I know is challenging for children right now, and, you know, even for teachers, is the, the social interaction, it's the isolation associated with, with this, and having the opportunity to have a, you know, whether or not it be an email conversation back and forth, or something that occurs through Google Hangout or Zoom, those are all things that we're, we're looking at, you know, having really take place in a way that allows, you know, all of us to kind of feel like we're, we're still the community that we are when we can see, you know, one another in person. So we're, we're moving forward with that, and, you know, all of that should be rolled out very, very soon.
Okay. Member Godbout, is he over there?
I am, but I don't have a question.
All right. Fantastic. Member Gustafson. Malaya?
All right. Yep. Am I here? Okay. I have a couple of things. I'll try to be quick. First, I want to say thank you to all the administration and the teachers, because I know there's been a lot of communicating going on, even though we can't see all of it. And I know people appreciate that. I know I do, because it makes it easier to answer questions we're getting. So thank you all for all of your efforts. I have a question following up on the students with disabilities, and I know everything, a lot of things are being talked about and worked on. I know consistency has been mentioned, Daryl mentioned consistency, and continuity, and that's one concern I have, because I know already, there's been some questions with some counselors have called. there's been some questions with some counselors have called their students, maybe from the high school I've heard. While others have not heard anything from their teachers, some of them have emailed their student or their staff at their schools and been told, look at the website for guidance. And so it seems like I'm happy to hear that there is consistency in the work. But it seems like even to this point, there's been, I, I don't know what the teachers and staff have been told. And parents are getting different messages. So that's one of my concerns that we're a very large district and we perhaps, we need to make sure that we're being consistent in what our students are being offered or can be offered, even right now. I'm concerned about students who don't have, whether they have special, students with disabilities or not, students that don't have web access, because a lot of the things we're talking about involve online interactions. And not all of our students had internet even a couple of years ago. And I know that not every house has a computer or consistent access to it if parents are using it for work. And there's one computer, there's limited access. So I'm concerned about how we're going to meet the needs of those students when everything we are talking about is web-based, which is, is good, but I don't want to leave those other students out in whatever we do. And I have a very practical question that I've been asked several times about going forward, when further decisions are made, how we will let students access items they've left in their schools. So that's something for perhaps, Daryl, I'm sure you guys are thinking about that down the road. But students have AP materials, if they're in AP classes, they have instruments, they have things of value left in their lockers, which was just for a half day when we left. And now it's, who knows how long. So several people have asked me that. So those are my, I guess, questions. And with students with disabilities in particular, I think it would be helpful if we could send some sort of an update, even saying, these are the things we're working on to our students and families in special education, because they have not gotten a dedicated message consistently from the district. And I think that's adding to some of their confusion. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Malia. Those, those are great points. Let me just kind of go through those one by one. So with students with disabilities, I know Christine and I have talked about having her send something out directly to students. We, you know, literally, we, we, and again, to a fault, I think, waiting for direction from the federal government and then also from the state government around necessary steps. You know, I, I've been in contact with our legal counsel, Matt McAvoy, on numerous occasions over the past week, over this weekend, about, you know, how we can move forward with this. Because, you know, again, we can't sit idle and we do not want to put any students at a disadvantage in one form, one form or fashion. So that is something that we're working on and we're, we're looking at, you know, having that consistent message go out. So that's a really good point. So that, that will, that will go out. You know, in reference to this, the web access, that, that's also a concern that, you know, I've been talking directly about with our, our teachers. Because again, their concern is that they're, they might hit 98% of their kids. But what about the, the one student that doesn't have Wi-Fi or the one student whose parent works at home? And that is the only computer that they have. Many kids have phones. And phones are great for, they're not great for composing. They're not great for, I mean, they're fine for texting, maybe for watching a YouTube video or checking the weather. But they're not great as a, as a learning platform in terms of doing different things. But for, for some kids, that might be it. I actually, this is something I threw out to Dan Deedee and Bob Rollo this afternoon. I just read an article about a school district that is providing Wi-Fi hotspots through buses. So school buses actually go out to different parking lots in the various communities in which the school is located. And there, they park the bus for two to three hours a day and people can drive over. It's inconvenient, but, you know, it's one of the only ways that we can kind of do this. I, I also know that, and I, you know, Barry Sklar is on the line as well, but we've posted the, I believe it's Spectrum and Comcast both offer up the opportunity for either free or low cost access to the internet right now because of the COVID-19 situation. So I, I think, you know, if families need to take advantage of that, that was, that's also something that we, we've shared. And then, you know, in terms of items left in school, that's, that's something that we'll have to, you know, deal with. Yeah, we're going to have to get people in there in some form or fashion to be able to retrieve items. You know, AP course materials, you know, anything, you know, the one thing is, you know, we're, we, we want to ensure that we're not, you know, keeping kids from getting, you know, specific items that they might need to learn.
I appreciate that. I, I will reiterate my concern about students who don't have access, because I, I think it's more than equipment, it's more than a hotspot. And that also encourages people to leave their homes. I just, I just want to make sure that we're thinking through that. I don't know the answer, obviously. I don't expect you to at this moment. But we do have a lot of diversity in our district and we have parents working from home. We have rural towns that have Wi-Fi, but spotty Wi-Fi. So I just, I don't, I don't want to miss that and rely entirely on students having Wi-Fi access in some way, because the truth is, most of them, not all of them do. We assume they do in our district, but not all of them do. And particularly where people are sharing resources because parents are working at home. You know, I just want to make sure we don't leave those kids out and we find some way to still communicate with them, whether it's letters or, I don't know what the answer is, but something to still get them some sort of enrichment that we're providing to other students rather than assuming they can get it electronically. So.
Yep. I agree. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Member Haber, Sheri, are you there? Sheri, you're super quiet. Can you maybe talk a little louder?
Between what teachers are sending home has been key for, for a lot of the parents that I've talked to. And teachers are asking what their expectations are. They're looking for guidance.
Sorry, Sheri, you know, I missed the very first part of that question, but it sounds, it sounded like toward the end of it, the teachers are looking for guidance. That's exactly what, you know, I've been talking with the teachers' union about over the past few days. And, you know, we're, we are, you know, we're right there in terms of providing a defined situation that will kind of allow all of us to better support the kids. And that's really where we're, where we're at. I know teachers want to do this, we want to do this. So it's a matter of just organizing it in a way that's conducive to, to everyone. And as Member Gustafson just mentioned, you know, the things that are popping up continually are like, you know, how are we, how are we reaching families and kids who might not have the internet or who do not have, you know, easy access to a computer or who have, you know, their parents might not be available to support them during the day because they're doing other, other items as well.
So Member Gustafson is following up with just asking what kind of guidance teachers have been given already, because it says there's inconsistency. What I'm hearing, oops, what I'm hearing you say, Daryl, is that that's going to come out very soon?
Yes.
Okay. Sheri, are you set for right now? Okay. Uh, Member Haynes, Jeff, you there?
I am, I am. So a lot of the things that are around my mind have been discussed. I'll just try to be as quick as I can. I do agree with the idea of not being dependent upon the legislature, either state or federal, to move ahead. And I do appreciate all the work that everyone's been doing to move even as far as we've got to this point. So whatever we can do on our own, independent of whatever happens either in Boston or DC is, is a good idea. One, one thought I had when I was listening to the concerns, and it's a valid one about if there's a shared computer at home, when, when the teachers come out with their, with their assignments, it might be useful to stagger or postpone the due dates, however they want to do that. So it's not due per se at the end of the school day because someone might be, someone might be working on a computer that time. So maybe if the, if the due date for whatever they're working on is at night or the next morning, something like that, they may alleviate some of the traffic if there's only one computer at the house. I really want to ask, I saw that the meals program is, is got one more day after today, I believe, on the 30th. Are there more meal, meal, meal days set to come if this closure keeps going?
So, thank you, Jeff. Those are great question at the end and also great point about the, you know, staggering the, the assignment. So again, the involved assignments that are done are going to be, you know, recommended and, you know, kids can take their time on it when they're working through it. So, but that's a really good point and one we'll, we'll take note of. My, my plan would be to continue with this as long as we're closed. And by this, I mean the free reduced lunch support program for kids. It makes no sense to me that those kids should be left out during this time of need. So it would not be something that we would take away from them. So we'll, we'll continue with this as long as schools close.
And do they, do they need help? Do they need help? Do they need more people with what they're doing?
You know what? You know, it's interesting. It, it, what, what concerns me, and this is something we all need to think about, because we're, we're, we're only at the very beginning of this situation. We know that this is going to, the cases are going to basically exponentially increase over the next few weeks, because if we follow the same trajectory that Italy has, you know, we're going to be in a pretty tough place, you know, across the board with, with families and people that we know who have COVID-19. And, you know, our concern is always having enough people to provide support services. So if that were the case, we would definitely reach out to people to see if they could help support that program. You know, I can tell you, I think it's about 12 people go in on Sunday and they put everything together at the high school cafeteria and they're keeping their social distance. So that's the really important thing. But, you know, they're working through that. And, you know, on Monday, they offer up the opportunity for people to come pick those up. So it's been, it's been a very good program. Families are so appreciative of it and we're so happy that we can do it. So we just have to, we just have to look at this carefully and ensure that we have the ability to, to support them as much as we can.
Sure. I, yeah, I guess I just, if, if they need people or if someone's sick or the, the need grows or whatever, that, I mean, this community certainly would be a good place, I would imagine, to start if, if more hands are needed.
Oh, thank you. I, I agree.
I, I have one other question. It's, it's very general. But I'm going to throw it out there because it's kind of off, off of the, off the rails of what we've been talking about so far. But I'm just wondering, does the nature of our contract, for example, with the bus company or other vendors that we have, will we, as a district, can we reasonably expect to see some relief for some of these services, which obviously are currently on hiatus? And on a related note, is it possible that this early or at some time in the near future, we would be able to lock in to our oil prices for, for next year? Because I remember there was a projected 4% increase in oil expenses for next year. And it seems like with all the craziness going on and all the negative things that are happening, there might be a couple of things that could actually work a little bit in our favor.
So those, those are two good questions. You know, in terms of payments to services not yet rendered, such as the bus company, you know, Dan and I sat, you know, I, I, we've now sat in on a few, and Dan, DeeDee, you're welcome to jump in when I'm done. But we've sat in on, over the past week, two conversations with DESI concerning where we're at with with our, our bus transportation. You know, again, I, I did have a call from the owner of AA last Tuesday to kind of talk about where we're at with this. You know, our feeling is that we're at that point where if a service is not rendered and we have the capacity to hold back on payment, then we will do so because, again, we don't have 49 buses running on a daily basis. In terms of oil, you know, unfortunately, we've already done our, we've already participated in our oil service. And we, we bought in, I believe, and Dan, you can correct me, I believe we bought in at $2.24 earlier in the year with French River, correct?
That, that's correct. Unfortunately, we're, we're locked into the oil for, for next year. I mean, that, that oil was bought on the market by Peterson, our provider, months ago. So we, we can't change that. And, and where the, the price per gallon is, is a pretty aggressive price. It'd be, I guess it'd be different if it were like four or $5 a gallon, where we would sit down and say, hey, what can you do for us? But at the two plus dollars per gallon, price per gallon, there, there isn't much, much wiggle room there to negotiate a, even a reduced rate.
All right.
Unfortunately.
Just wanted to ask.
Great question.
All right. Thank you. So the, the bus and out of district tuitions are things that, you know, we'll hear more about, I assume, as the, as the weeks go on.
Yeah, we're, it, it's been a hot tomato for sure, with all school business officials waiting for some direction from, from DESI and, and DOR. I mean, we're, we're paid through, through March with AA as we normally would have been. And right now, the, the challenge becomes, April, I mean, the Anthony Bus is running in, in April. We, we, at this point, wouldn't be paying them. And the tuitions, that's especially out of district, especially some of the collaboratives where, as, as they argued, to not make those payments would be, be akin to a, a district not, not getting the, the chapter 70. So a lot of balls up in the air and, and nothing definitive.
All right. Thank you. So, Member Imber.
Yeah, hi. So, so again, I, I guess I'd like to reiterate Scott Brown and, and Member Dennis's, what I believe, what, what they were suggesting that we, we'd be looking at what sort of long-term services we're providing. And I want to thank, you know, certainly Daryl and the administration for, for, you know, a bizarre and chaotic situation and faculty as well. But the question is, you know, other than providing ancillary, ancillary services to, to students, what are we going to do in terms of long-term planning and, and providing quality education of, I don't know, three to six hours of services a day? And is there any plan for that?
Welcome back, Bob, if you are back.
I am. Thanks.
We were all worried about you. So if you didn't, Bob had been on a, a long journey in the South Pacific, and I'm glad he's back. So with that being said, the, the issue that we're, we're still trying to address and we will be addressing is just, you know, the, the continuity of services that we want to provide to students. I think long-term, you're, you're, you're hitting the nail on the head, Bob. That's, these are the steps that we're taking. So, you know, we don't have the capacity to kind of pull back and say, okay, let's take a breath now. Let's, let's, you know, sit back and figure this one part out. We have to look at not only tomorrow and the next day, but we have to look at next week, we have to look at next month. And what that will do is put us in a situation where we have a better idea of, of where we're at and what we're able to provide to kids. So, so, so I'm, I'm on the same page. This is really a, a, a much longer term issue. That's what I foresee. I foresee this going on much longer. So when I'm looking at planning, I'm looking at planning well down the road.
Okay. So, so will we have a sense maybe in two weeks for some sort of meeting that will have a better sense of what the plan is?
Yeah, I, you know, I, I would hope so. Again, I think one of the things we have to do is look back at where we're, where we're at now. Yeah, I, you know, I, I would hope so. Again, I think one of the things we have to do is look back at where we're, where we're at now, what we're going to be providing, you know, moving forward and then looking at, at long-term. I think, you know, two weeks might be a little early in terms of looking at something if it's toward, you know, if it's for another three weeks, five weeks, eight weeks to the end of the year. So we're gonna, but we will do our best to have something that gives us some type of scope and sequence for a, a long-term plan of action.
Thanks, Darrell. And hang in there. You know, it's, it's a bizarre world.
Thank you, Bob. I appreciate the support.
All right, member Christian Baum. Larry, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you all, all the staff and you, Darrell.
I think we lost you there, Larry. We'll, we'll come back to, to member Christian Baum next. So, member Lavoy, are you there?
Tom here. Can you hear me?
I can, yes.
All right. I want to echo a few things that I've heard in terms of commending some of the teachers who've definitely reached out and have had a lot of engagement, but I do want to point out, I've had the opportunity to watch one classroom and 12 out of 18 kids have, have been involved. So my question is, would we as administration ever be happy with a third of the population just being completely absent, not knowing where they are or what's going on? So a question I have for administration is equitable access to technology. Have we done an inventory of everybody in this district who does not have Chromebook? And have we looked at ways of getting that technology in their hands? The other thing that I've seen is very little to no instruction happening. I've seen a lot of emails with links. I think you look at wrsd.net and it's absolutely disheartening to see that all of the online learning links are for typical kids. There is a link there for special needs kids and it, it is a link for strategies for supporting kids for special needs, how to communicate, how to build a structured schedule and how to manage behavior. I think if parents are home with their kids with special needs, they know all those things and they're looking for resources to teach. And the reason why you don't have online learning for kids with special needs is those classes need to be adopted and adapted by certified teachers that need to modify the curriculum. None of that is happening today in our district, none of it. I can tell you at Central Tree Middle School, there's a development program and the development teacher has not reached out to students in the class. So your typical kids are getting emails and saying, log in and do this. 12 out of 18 might be logging in. Six out of 18 are somewhere, we don't know where. The special ed kids are not being contacted. So the inconsistency is not, is, is present. The consistency is not there. And we shouldn't be waiting for the state and using that as a reason as to why we're ignoring our kids. My last question for the superintendent is, we might be heading down the road of a 1/12 budget, knowing that town meetings aren't going to happen. When would you anticipate having to make staffing decisions if you did? That would be related to that being potential cuts or budgetary implications?
Thank you, Matt, for those questions. Those are all, those are all excellent. You know, the, the first question around, you know, the number of students participating, you know, it's, it's, I guess, you're, it, it goes more to the equitable access to technology. One of the things that we are attempting to figure out right now is really how best to, and, you know, whether or not this happens through a voice call out, but Barry and I talked about this today, would be to find out what, what students have access to. Today I met with, we had a virtual meeting with building principals this morning. And, you know, that was one of the conversation points that we had, you know, in, in terms of what we need to do to basically solicit some feedback from families that, you know, let us know what you have for technology and, you know, how might we be able to help support them? We have, we have a lot of Chromebooks in our schools, you know, but, you know, we have, one of our issues is that many of our Chromebooks go back into a Chrome cart and that Chrome cart is all one piece and they plug in. And also those Chrome carts tied back, or the Chromebooks in our schools tie back to a specific IP address. So it would just take an awful lot of configuration on the part of our, our technology crew and trying to do that. But it, it was something that we threw out there today and, you know, it's definitely something that we're, we're looking at. We're also, and, and again, back to your first point, we are looking at exactly who is, you know, doing, who will be doing the work? Part of it is, you know, the lessons, the, the work that we're currently providing to students and will be providing is that, you know, the activities are going to be optional, they're optional ultimately. Because we are in a, in a kind of, a position where we're providing enrichment support activities, we can't force a student, we can't force a family to say, okay, let's sit down and do this. But as you said, how do we know whether or not the kids even have access to it in the first place? So that's really our, our next step. That's a great point. Yes.
So I just want to share with you, I'm gonna share a text with you. So you're talking about optional. That's your perception. So the perception of a 11-year-old being told by an adult for something to do, being a teacher, is not optional. So here's a text message my daughter received today. Anyway, don't you think so-and-so is giving us a lot of work this week? I guess so. It's optional. You don't have to do it. Last week I just did all the updates, two skill sharpeners, the conference, which lasted a half an hour, and the one with the picture and creative the title. I did the same. Yeah, I know it was optional, but for some reason I feel obligated and I have to do it.
Okay. And that's from, that's a student to a student, correct?
Student to a student. You gotta put yourself in the 11-year-old's mind. Darrell, our teachers emailing them saying, do this. You have kids waking up in the morning saying, I have to do my work. And there's no instruction. There's links. Today I woke up to four emails from four different teachers with 17 different links in each one of them.
Well, you know what, Matt? I appreciate that feedback in terms of what you're kind of sharing, because this is, this is the information that we need in order to.
A child in the development program who's not heard from their teacher or anybody in the district.
Yep. And I, I appreciate that. And that's, Chris, Chris, I know that was something that you wanted to talk a little bit about.
So I just, I want it to be clear that you can talk about this all you want in terms of we're getting there, we're getting there. In reality, it's not happening. It's not happening, Darrell. There's no modification, and I'm gonna get off my soapbox, but it's not happening.
So, Chris, if you want to respond, I know that was something that you wanted to talk briefly about.
Going on absence and not even reaching out to people and why are other teachers sending emails every day? That's what I want to know. If you're telling me it's because there's a union issue, then you need to tell your teachers to stop, because if they're not all behaving the same way, it's creating inconsistency and very fair infrastructure for the kids in this district.
I, I would like to respond to that.
It's ridiculous. For the parent, it's, it's.
Chris?
Yeah, sure. So I, I'm, I'm so sorry though for the inconsistent messages. In fact, that, as Darrell alluded to earlier, that was why I didn't send out a message, because Darrell had made it really clear that he wanted the messages coming consistently from him so that all of our teachers were getting that singular message. And then I think that it, it, you know, I can't speak to the exact situation as to why your daughter hasn't heard from her teacher. And I think that, that, you know, a message went out and we asked our community of teachers to be in touch with their students and their families so that they felt the homeschool connection was still in place. Because as I saw in the chat, we know that our kids are missing their teachers. They're missing their routine. They're missing their friends. They're missing their, what feels like their normal life. And I think that we've made progress in what our expectations are going forward. But again, that message is coming out from the superintendent's office so that it's as crystal clear as possible.
So I guess the last, I don't see a clear message from the superintendent's office. I see some teachers using the kindness of their own heart and extending themselves and other teachers taking a paid vacation. So I'm asking, what is the administration's viewpoint? Are the teachers working now or are they just sending emails, sending them to the kids that they want and others not sending them? Because we're too afraid to take a stance right now, because these are fragile special needs kids. And if we do, we're putting ourselves at risk. Because I haven't emailed.
Matt, please let them respond, okay?
Darrell, are you responding or me?
Go ahead, Chris. You were starting.
Sure. So I, you know, I, the message that we sent out to, that Darrell sent out was that we would like our teachers to maintain the homeschool connection with our students. We are, I, I can imagine that it feels like we're doing nothing, but we really are doing a lot. The list of resources that is on the WRSD website does include special education. And as you said, it does have a very detailed page that we put out there specifically for our students who require ABA discrete trials or may appear to be, need more structure or parents may need some ideas about how to do that. There's an additional link there that says special educational optional activities. And within there, there are embedded many, many links for our families. Because enrichment activities don't necessarily mean, you know, do this bookwork or do this, this next chapter. I think that our special education teachers were thinking about how to use this time and create engagement activities for our students that are, that are, that are home right now. So because we know that our kids, at, all of our students learn through engagement. And I think that that's where my teachers, my special ed teachers looked to finding resources that were about engaging students. So I do urge you to take a look at that other tab if you haven't had a chance to do that. And rest assured, we are, we are working behind the scenes here trying to ensure that what we provide is equitable and accessible to all of our students and reasonable. So thank you for bringing some of the discrepancy to the forefront for us. I don't believe that's been the experience across the district. Obviously, we will hear from families if they're feeling slighted or feeling like they don't have what is equitably being shared to other families.
The, I'm talking about a wide program here. The development program is a district-wide program. So when we talk about equitable across the district, I'm talking about a district-wide program here.
Okay. So right, the other, the other part of the question, just to give the superintendent a chance to respond, then we'll move on to member Christian Baum, was about a 1/12 budget. So I believe member Lavoy asked about if it was in the works of thinking about what, you know, what that, what the process for that might look like planning-wise?
Sure. So, you know, as you know, again, the stock market took another tumble today. And, you know, my guess is that the state revenues are going to be hurt pretty badly over the next few, few months. The state does have a pretty decent rainy day fund, which is going to benefit, I think, all of us as we kind of move through this. But it will definitely put us in a position that won't. But the, the lack of funds will definitely put us in a position where I think we're gonna have a, a very tough time moving forward, you know, outside of a 1/12 budget. So, you know, Dan and I have talked about the concept of the 1/12. It's always, again, we work on, under, we've worked under 1/12 in, in my administration for the first four years. So it's, it's not something that's new. It's something that we have done quite frequently. And, you know, if it's something that we need to do starting July 1, we have the capacity to do it. The planning for that, you know, will occur. Again, that's, that's down the road. It's in the back of my mind, but I'm still trying to deal with the immediate issues associated with making sure our kids are getting what they need right now. I'm looking at this with Dan farther down the road in terms of what we might end up talking about in terms of, you know, modifications to our budget, modifications to different lines associated with what we originally proposed and how we might, how we might support all the schools starting July 1 and then moving forward.
Did you have a number of percentage of kids that do not have technology at home? Do not have computers supplied by the school?
You know, I think I already talked about that, Matt. We talked about that today. We were, Barry and I were, you know, figuring out the best way to assess that. And, you know, we were talking about doing it through a school messenger, because some people, if they do not have technology, it doesn't make any sense to send an email. I do know, and Barry, if you want to jump in on this, Power Teacher or Power School, we do have emails, I think, for almost all of our families.
Do you know hardware? I'm talking hardware.
Hardware, we, we don't have an assessment of what people have at home for hardware right now. If we had known this were the case.
Matt, can you hold on?
Yeah, if, if we had known this was, was going to be the case, you know, a month ago, we'd be, this, this would have looked very different in terms of how it would have been planned out. So, you know, we would have taken those Chrome carts apart and set it up and had them ready to go.
China 1-on-1 initiative, though, for five years, how many kids do not have a one-on-one to go home?
The one-on, the Chromebooks, the one-to-one initiative is, is at the high school. So all students have a Chromebook at the high school. Chromebooks at the middle school and elementary levels are school-based Chromebooks.
So we don't have any one going home for kids at the middle school or elementary?
No, we shouldn't.
And so we're expecting these kids to access technology with, okay, with hardware that they have. Okay.
All right, recur Christian Baum?
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Barry, did you have something to add?
Only if Darrell's gonna ask me a question, I don't.
Okay.
I wasn't trying to.
No, sorry, Barry, it was about the, the, the access to emails.
Oh, yeah. Well, we, we do have emails for, for every family in Power School. And that's how we populate the emails in school messenger. So we have the contact information.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Christian Baum?
Okay. Hopefully my computer won't die on me this time. So I appreciate that, that you're waiting for the direction from the state and other districts. But other districts are moving forward with the direction that's already come forward. So I want to talk about that. I really strongly believe that we need to blaze a path. We do not, we should not be waiting to act from direction, more direction from the state. I feel that we don't have the luxury to wait for perfection. We need to start sending out resources to students more than what's on the, the website. Community is essential for our kids. We're not going to replicate school, but we can at least simulate some of the aspects that, that exist when, clearly some of the teachers are already getting that message. They're reaching out to their kids while other students have not gotten anything. Communication is one of the most critical parts of school, having that FaceTime or that relationship between students and students and teacher and students. And so I just want everybody to understand that we're not looking for perfection, but I think that, you know, other districts are moving forward with plans. And I don't think that it's reasonable to wait another two weeks to develop a plan. We have parents that are working from home and they can't be expected to wade through a six to 12 resource or a 12 to six resource to, to find appropriate and engaging activities for their kids. So I'd, I'd like to know, because so much has already been said, I'd just like to know when we can expect to see. I'd just like to know when we can expect to see grade level and subject-specific learning opportunities available in any form to our students. And I realize that special education is a consideration, but our whole district is not special education. And so we need to be thinking about all of our students, all of our students here. So I'd like to know when we, we should expect to see students being engaged in some real, real form of enrichment opportunities.
Thank you, Laura, for that. So we're looking at the end of this week, beginning of next week. So teachers are working in grade-level teams over the next, you know, they have been working with one another, but to find areas over the next day to two around common concepts that we will be using in terms of enrichment. I know Deputy Berlau is going to be helping them out with that as well in terms of grade-level department teams as well. So that will happen toward the end of this week, beginning of next week. Definitely in their hands by then. Communication will go out from teachers as well.
Okay, thank you. I do have a follow-up question. And, and that is around. Uh, hold on, I'm looking at my notes here.
Don't worry.
I just want to remind us that we, you know, we, we do have parents and students who may have resources at home where they're being signed up for online classes and online tutorials. And I'm, every ti, every day that goes by, the gap widens between the kids that can move forward and students who are just waiting to hear back from their, from their teachers. And, you know, Member LaVoy said it, that when kids get a message from their teacher, it's different than when a parent says, hey, let's look on that website and let's try and find something that works for you. And you have reluctant learners at home who don't want to listen to their parents, but will listen to their teacher and stay engaged. And I think that that is, you know, critical. Not all enrichment opportunities, not everything has to be online. It can be things that they can do at home, building things and, you know, and, and doing things that are engaging that may not be traditional classroom assignments like worksheets and things like that.
Those are, those are great points, Laura. I completely appreciate those. And I think, again, you know, it's thinking outside the box and it's moving forward. We can't afford to wait. We can't afford to sit back. It's really looking at how we can press forward with this. You know, regardless of what's happening at the state level or the federal level, you know, we have to do what's right for kids and we need to do it ASAP.
And can I just make one more question here? I know my time is probably limited now, but the, I would encourage teachers to be working collaboratively at grade levels, simply because if one teacher, unfortunately with this virus, becomes incapacitated in some way, either through their own illness or having to take care of a family member, God forbid, another teacher could, you know, kind of pick up the slack there and still maintain some continuity for students.
Thank you for that. And, you know, in fact, I was on a conference call today and Heidi Leahy, the union president, actually made that same exact statement in reference to, you know, just in case, in the same way that if a teacher went home sick, you could have your neck, your neighbor, if we were still in that brick and mortar, you could have your neighbor say, hey, listen, can you make sure the sub tomorrow does A, B, and C for me? So we want to ensure that we have some contingency plans set aside for this as well because the likelihood that we are going to have teachers ill, it's, it's highly probable. The likelihood that, you know, we will have parents ill is also highly probable. So these are all things that, you know, we have to think about moving forward. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Member Long Belial, Linda, are you there? Linda? Okay, I don't, I don't hear. Linda, you're not muted. So we'll come back to you, Linda. The next person on the list is Amy, Member Mitchellowski. I'm sorry, Linda, you, you are here, okay. I'm sorry, Linda, are you, are you there? Linda put in the chat that she was there. We'll come back to her. Amy, go ahead.
Hi, I, I won't take too long. I know that a lot of what is on my mind has been said. I will just reiterate a couple of things, I think, for emphasis. Regarding moving forward with making sure that we are, you know, taking action and not waiting necessarily for state directive. I do want to express a little bit of disappointment in that I think that we're a week late on starting a technology assessment. I know that colleagues that I work with, like, that was part of the central office push the first week when they were out, when there was a lot of that planning happening to do that district-level assessment to see where they needed to get, where the gaps were. So it's a little, it's good that it's happening now, but I think that that is something that we're now behind the eight ball a little bit. And I think just reemphasizing the need for consistency in communication to make sure that families do know that they understand what's coming on the horizon. The concerns I have are around grade-level progression, folks have mentioned before, and what's happening with kids. And then the last thing, Daryl, and I think that I tried to reach out to you today and we can certainly have an offline conversation. But I think just making sure the administration understands that there's certainly like a macro-level equity and access question that undoubtedly we have to be aware of. But I also want to emphasize that, like, even small decisions are opportunities for thinking about how, when we are faced with a situation like this that is unprecedented and really unimaginable for how it impacts kids, we have to ask ourselves a question continually. Is there a way to do X, whatever X is, in a kind of do no harm fashion? So decisions we make about how we choose to grade kids and how we choose to confirm what their score is for the year. So I think we have to look at the big picture to make sure that we're always thinking of, you know, making sure that we can meet the needs and, you know, maybe adapting our decisions to varying situations that students find themselves in. And that's all for now. Oh, I did have one brief question. Are we still paying all of our hourly employees, like all of the folks that haven't been able to work in a suspension of activity?
So yes, we are right now. You know, again, moving forward, what we're doing is, and this is one of the things where having a thin central office, this is, this is when it becomes a challenge because we have so few people kind of working. I mean, we do a good job when things are working well. When things are kind of thrown in dire array, which, and I think no one could have imagined this. It becomes a challenge. So we're all spread pretty thin. You know, Jeff and I and Bob have been working on, you know, looking at PD opportunities for our paraprofessional, because again, I think that's the area that we want to focus on. We do have, you know, our custodians who are spending time, still going back into the buildings, doing building checks at this time. They've, they've done their deep cleanings. So we are still paying our hourly employees at this time. And we'll have to take an assessment of that, you know, over the next week or so to see, to see where we're at and what the next steps might be. You know, in reference to, you know, what we might think about, you know, moving forward. I'm just getting some feedback on the, some microphone. So, you know, I appreciate, you know, moving forward, you know, without the state directive. I'm of the same mindset. And we, you know, we do want to provide as much kind of consistent messaging as possible. You know, in reference to the, to the grading and so forth, I, I agree, Amy. This is something that, you know, we had talked about in our meeting, the conference call meeting with the commissioner on Friday. And it was around, we were looking at grading third quarter, pass, fail, credit, no credit, or even end of the year. And we're going to have some broader discussions about that. You know, our initial conversation was around, you know, maybe we just do pass, fail. That was the original thought. And, you know, as we've kind of looked at this a little more broadly, I know Deputy Berlau and I have had a couple of conversations about this and, you know, where we might, where we might push around making this work for all students as, as best we can. So we're, we're still looking at everything.
It's really complicated. And I do want to say, I think that, like, at a time when this is really challenging, I mean, getting back to like Maslow's, like, base hierarchy of needs, right? Fed, shelter, security, and comfort. Like, I do appreciate that that's been the primary public-facing focus of the district in this first week. And I, I, you know, I echo some of the other feedback on just, it helps us to know a little bit more detail about what's happening behind the scenes so that when folks ask us questions, we can more confidently speak about, you know, the direction that we're going in. And that would be helpful, too. So thank you, though.
Of course, thank you, Amy.
Since we're at my point on the list, I'm going to turn to the student reps, who I guess I did skip. And they probably have more stamina than we do, but I do want them to get the chance to have their, their two or five cents in before the meeting continues. So Leah, Rihanna, do you have, do you have things?
Um, we did have some things planned. We know that a lot of students are worried about, like, end-of-year activities, like middle school and high school graduations, like how they'll be impacted and like prom, senior barbecue, or like award nights, things like that. We just like, we don't really know what's going on with them. So like, that's like one thing that concerns a lot of kids. And a lot of other students are also seeing posts on social media about other school districts canceling April break and like canceling a lot of events. And like, I think we're just looking for like direction on like how the year's going to plan out. But I'm not sure if like, I don't know who else is going to give that, but I don't know.
To add on to that as well, we've had, I've had at least a bunch of students come to me and tell me that they're looking for more of just maybe a message from the district, just saying, giving a general outline, saying, hey, you know, this stuff is still currently going on. Nothing's been officially canceled yet, that kind of thing. Because it's all been going out to parents, so not all of the students are aware that all the events haven't been canceled, but are seeing it from other schools on social media and are reacting as if they are canceled. And so that was a big thing. Also, right now, with the work that is being given out, especially, I can speak more from my perspective, being in a bunch of AP classes. A lot of it feels like, well, yes, it's for enrichment. We're almost doing it, but getting no, like, no credit out of it. And so we're wondering if it might be possible to offer it as an extra credit option for students, which could help their grades, especially being impacted by such a short quarter three. But then also, it wouldn't hurt any students who don't have access to the same resources. And then in terms of resources, could printed work be possible? If we get feedback from students and families who don't have the technology, could we possibly be sending out things like that to students just to get that connection? What I felt and what some of my friends are saying is that being so far away from the school community is really hard and being surrounded by parents who are working from home during the day. A lot of the time we're spending is alone, and so just having that connection really helps. And so potentially, just even something as sending letters to students or maybe redistributing the Chromebooks. I know I myself have access to a separate computer and I have friends who have access to a separate computer. So would it be possible to redistribute any of those extra resources we have to students who don't have access? Because if we aren't using it, they might be able to put it to good use. And then the last thing, most major thing I had, would it be possible to provide food options, lunch for all students in the district, not just any student who meets the free or reduced lunch options? Because especially as financial situations are changing, as a lot of people are, a lot of parents are being laid off, it might be hard to get food for their kids. And so especially in terms of applying for the free and reduced lunch, if it is still possible, it would require a wait time to actually hear back and get feedback. So I was wondering if it's possible at all just to provide it to any student in the district who is looking for it.
So thank you, both of you. Those, those were excellent questions. And I will attempt to respond as best I can. You know, the end-of-year activities, so what you said was some of the information has gone directly to parents and not to students, correct?
Yes, so some of the information, the emails are being sent out to parents. And so students don't actually know. They haven't received all of the information themselves. They've been told by their parents, oh, you know, school's canceled until this date. But they don't know exactly what that means in terms of future events that are happening and things that we haven't necessarily canceled or things that are still going on right now.
Okay, that makes sense. I mean, what I can tell you is that, you know, in terms of the high school, those were the, those were the, the main questions that were coming into Principal Bando's mailbox over the past week and a half. And he and I have had a couple of conversations around that. The, in, in all honesty, there's a strong possibility that most gatherings will not be occurring in the near future. So we, we're, you know, we're not shutting everything down, you know, at, at this stage of the game. But, for example, spring athletics, I think those are pretty much going to be off the table this year. You know, I know my own son's graduation at the University of Massachusetts was postponed last weekend. And he's now home with us for an extended period of time. So I know exactly what other parents are going through right now. And I think as we kind of look at what we're, what we, we could do, you know, as things become a little more solidified in terms of a timeframe, we will definitely send information out there as best we can. And, you know, we will make sure that if something comes out from the district. So again, when I send something out, I send it out to every email that we have available through a school messenger. So do you guys get my school messenger messages?
I do not get any messages from you or from, like, I didn't know about school getting canceled until my parents told me.
I also.
So I'm not getting any messages.
Yeah, don't get any of the messages.
Okay, so those, so those go back to, and that's probably my ignorance, so I apologize. Those probably go back to fields that are within Power School that are already defined, predefined. So I'm not sure how and whether or not that would go from Principal Bando to you, but we'll look at a way to, to do that. You know, we, you know, in terms of the, the printed work, how that might work out, you know, if there is a way, we'd love to be able to do that. I'm just not sure how that would work right now because, again, it is, it's going to be a challenge just having people in and out of buildings with, with what the governor talked about today in terms of essential employees. We, we do, you know, we still have the capacity to, to move as, as educators, but they're really looking for people to kind of stay put. So we'd really have to think long and hard about how that would work. I understand how hard it is for kids to not have the, the interactions with other kids. And you, again, it's been, it's been, you know, a good nine, 10 days where, where people have been confined. And I'm hoping once the good weather kicks in, it'll be a little easier for people to get outside and kind of deal with this through exercise and taking care of oneself. So that's, that's also something that I know Director Keenan is looking at in terms of the SEL support and how we can help through the guidance department. Like, I really like the idea of the Chromebooks. I think Barry will not be very happy with around that. But that's, that's a, a really nice way of thinking about how we could help support some of these other families that might not have access to technology. Because I know, you know, kids that do get the Chromebooks, not all kids, they use it in school, but they might have access to a computer at home. So that's, that's something we could definitely look at. And, you know, that final concept of providing food to all students. You know, we'd, we'd have to talk to our Director of Food Services around that. It would be a very expensive endeavor if we were to do that, in all honesty. And, um, that's the, that would be the part that would be a little more challenging. We can absorb some of these costs right now, because we're only talking about a hundred to a hundred and fifty kids, um, who are taking advantage of this. But if that number went up, um, you know, much more, i- it's, it's costs that we're not getting, um, any money back from the federal government on right now. So it becomes a little more of a challenge with us as, as we move forward over the next few months, if that's the case.
As a follow-up to that, would it be possible to maybe streamline the application process? So if financial situations do change and there are students who would qualify for free and reduced lunch, would they be able to still apply? And probably speed it up a bit so that way they can be receiving meals?
That's a great question. We can definitely talk to, um, Director Barton about that, because, you know, she's the one that would know better. Um, again, we, the forms that we use are the forms from the federal government. So if they streamline the process, we can streamline the process, but they're, they're the ones that kind of hold our hands in terms of what we, uh, can and cannot do.
But if we aren't getting reimbursed for it anyway, perhaps we can investigate whether there's some flexibility.
Definitely.
Uh, well, I thank our, our student reps for their very insightful questions. Um, I have skipped member Long Belio because of her technical difficulties, but I think she's on the phone with us now. Linda, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. Um, I'm glad that, uh, the question about, uh, school lunches was, was addressed and I appreciate that. I mean, I think if we have any difficulty getting, getting any reimbursement at some point, that we should reach out to our congressional reps and senators to see if there's something they can do at the federal level. To pass legislation or encourage the issuance of new regulations to address that issue. So, a lot of the concerns I had have been addressed. Uh, one, one question I had was that I heard Daryl say that, um, that, uh, there would be more information about online learning or other modalities of learning in the next week or two. And I was hoping to hear whether there would be a similar timeline for special education. I have also heard, um, some of the stories that Member Lavoy brought up about inconsistencies between regular ed and special ed. Um, and so I just wondered if you could give us more of a sense of a timeline for, um, addressing the needs of kids in special education more comprehensively to the extent that is possible.
Sure, Linda, that's a great question. Um, you know, again, Christine has been working diligently with her, um, special ed staff around, uh, really developing, uh, you know, uh, a, a way in which we can provide support to kids, um, that is meaningful. Um, and, and that's really been the crux of her conversations, the crux of the work that, that they've been doing all over the past several days. Um, you know, with that being said, you know, it's, a- and again, it is easier to move into, um, an online mode with, um, students that might not necessarily need that extra support. So I can't guarantee it's exactly the same, um, when it gets rolled out. But there's definitely already a support mechanism that we're going to roll into play in terms of, um, our, our specialized providers. And the support that they'll give to regular education teachers, um, around how they assist in terms of modifications associated with, uh, some of the voluntary assignments.
Great. Okay. Well, good. I hope that, uh, yeah, go ahead.
I was just going to add that, um, I, I wanted you to, um, remember that our teachers, our special education teachers are under the same contract as our gen ed teachers. So it's our expectation, um, when we come to those agreements that, um, that our special ed students should have, um, access in the same timely manner. I think your question was about timing, um, for. Yeah. So that would be the same is what I'm trying to say.
Oh, good. Okay, good. And then I had a couple more, um, uh, questions or suggestions. Um, I did see the resources on the website. I thought perhaps it might be a good idea to, um, make them, if, if it's possible, given staffing right now, to make them more prominent somewhere on the website and perhaps have a special tab for, um, I don't know what you'd want to call it.
Sure, yeah, we.
COVID nineteen. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
You know, COVID nineteen learning resources. I mean, that's certain, I don't know that that's a good title. It's probably not, but some sort of special place on the website that's very prominent for people. So they don't have to hunt, uh, for it. I think would be helpful. And then I had one more question after that.
Sure. So that's, you know, we could definitely do that. So if you go to the front page of our district website, right on the front, so right under about the R S D, the, the first one in there, COVID nineteen information. We have a tab for meal services and then the online learning resources. That's the next one. And you just click on that, do everything. So it's right on the front page. I don't know.
Okay, good.
Any more prominent, we could maybe make the font larger, uh, but it, it's right there on that front page.
Okay, good, good. Um, then my last question was, I know that a lot of testing is being postponed. I know the English, the 10th grade English language testing has been postponed and I'm hearing about the SAT and, and ACT, et cetera. And I know, I know you're not responsible for those latter two, but, um, I just wondered if you had any guidance for families and kids who are concerned about those, those tests?
So in terms of, um, the SAT and ACT, those have been cancelled, I believe through June, Linda. That was, uh, that was the last bit of information that I, that I was able to kind of lean over the days. Um, you know, how people need to kind of deal with that moving forward, I, I think is really something that they continue to do. Um, you know, in the same way that they would in terms of prepping for SAT. Um, and, um, those types of things. It looks like Amy had just written that, thank you, Amy, that SAT is still on for June, um, but we're still not sure. We're not sure whether or not that will even occur in all honesty.
I see, I see. And so if it doesn't occur, um, any, any suggestions for families?
So, um, I think this is, I think the, the issue that we're, we're kind of dealing with is when we're looking at a, um, you know, something that is, as I guess dramatic as the experience that we're, we're all going through right now. There are going to be so many modifications associated with, um, college entrance, associated with, um, SATs, associated with how kids are, are graded. Um, all of this is going to change the process, uh, I believe for, for a while. There are going to be some leniency measures put into place associated probably with, uh, college entrance exams and also with, um, eligibility for grants and so forth. So it's, it's something that, um, I feel horrible for families about. I know our guidance counselors at the high school, um, will be working diligently with this once we're back online in terms of knowing, um, what's going on. Um, cause again, you know, as, as we go through this, we keep talking about, um, where we might be in, you know, in the spring. But the more I've, you know, I spent an awful lot of time researching COVID nineteen. And, um, one of the concerns that I have is that there's, there's an ebb and flow associated with these types of, um, flu viruses. So it peaks, it levels off, and then it, it can come back vengeance in, in the fall and winter again. And, you know, I've also heard that with, um, the social isolation right now, by slowing it down right now, uh, that works to keep the, i- it flattens, it flattens everything out. It keeps the peak from occurring, but it flattens in a way where, um, it kind of lays under the surface. So it has a tendency still coming back, uh, later on down the road. So China is going to be the perfect example, um, of where, you know, of, of looking at what, what might occur with us, um, you know, six months down the road. I mean, because they're, they're ahead of us by about two and a half months.
Mm-hmm. Right. Yes. Okay. All right. So, um, I want to thank you and the central office staff and, and the teachers, uh, the whole school district, everyone in the district for all the hard work, um, and effort people have been putting in. Um, it is really greatly appreciated. And we all know that you're doing the best you can to try to, to make this as workable for families and kids as possible. So thank you.
Thank you, Linda. We real, we all really appreciate that.
Okay. So, um, just one thing that Rihanna is pointing out, which I also was aware of, the AP, you know, is, is changing and, and for those tests, it's kind of a work in progress. So AP is in the process of changing the structure and format and content of their test. So that'll be coming out soon too. Okay. So our next member, if people can mute themselves, because there's a bunch of background noise, um, member Mitchell. Ben, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. I'm on mute. Um, okay. So just, uh, a lot of good questions asked, covered a lot of topics. Um, I do have a few questions, more tactical. Um, one question will be the administration is there have been a lot of trips, programs, um, SAT prep classes that a lot of people have paid, uh, money to? Is there a timeline or a process in place to start, uh, reviewing how that will affect? You know, at all levels. I know it's up from middle school all the way down, all the way up to the high school. So that's question one. The, the second question is the last time I think we missed this much school was during the ice storm. And we ended up going to school on Saturdays and extended days. Are those all in play, um, for whenever we may or may not come out? And is that up to the district to make that call, a negotiation with the teachers? Or is that something that is, um, driven by the state?
Okay. So Ben, um, you asked a couple of questions that, um, it, I wake up in the middle of the night and I, I kind of process when I, I have a little more time to think about uh, some of these larger pic, picture issues. So in terms of trips and programs, uh, that are paid for. So for example, um, there was a trip to Barcelona in Spain, um, that the high school had, um, set up. And it, it went through a private company. So, um, fortunately there, a decision was made to cancel it by, by the group. Um, they made the decision themselves. So they were able to, uh, at least kind of defer, um, I think the trip. Um, so they, they didn't necessarily lose, um, all of their money. Um, in, but I think your question goes back to more, you, money that we bring in, is that correct?
Um, no, it's, it's a combination of, of both, right? You have a lot of families that have paid money for either classes that won't happen. As an example, the SAT prep or for field trips that may or may not happen. Um, I don't know how many of these were paid for already versus, you know, more of they were putting in a holding pattern. So it's kind of a combination of both. One is the set of money that we bring in. The other one is a set of money that parents have provided expecting a service and more than likely that service won't be provided.
Okay, those are, those, thank you for the clarification. So, um, you know, any money that was shared with or given to the district for a service that we're not going to provide will be, you know, given back to them, be given back to the families. So, um, again, we'll have to figure out a process for that. Um, in terms of the, you know, for example, um, spring sports, if, uh, spring sports don't occur, which I do not believe they will, I know some families have already, um, paid for, um, different athletic, sports that will be going on. So, um, we would reimburse those families, uh, that money. You know, we, we are looking at what we do bring in, um, for those funds. But again, um, as we look at where the money goes to, um, that money goes to pay for buses that wouldn't be used. That money goes to pay for referees that will not be used. That money actually goes to help pay for a small amount maybe of the stipend that coaches, uh, would receive if they were to have, uh, done that work. So, um, we're actually o- okay on that end. Um, in terms of ice storm information, like how that might work out. So if, if we were to come to the point where it's now the commissioner or the governor, uh, comes back and says, okay, it's the end of April, um, I think we'll be able to get you back into school. I think they will literally be looking at every single option available. So, um, when the ice storm did occur, uh, I know at the time we did everything in our power to get them to waive those days, um, as they have done with other districts in the past. And they, they did not do that for us, which is the reason why we ended up going to school on those extended days and on uh, that Saturday, those Saturdays. Um, I think everything is on the table, um, Ben, with what we might end up doing if we're back in school before the end of the school year.
Okay. And then I guess one, one follow-up to that, if we do not go back to school, um, how, what is, how are we going to manage the loss of learning? Is that, again, is that something that the district needs to work with? The teachers and the adminis- and the state administration, uh, um, for net kids starting next year?
Uh, yeah, I think that's, that's probably the $64,000 question in terms of how, how that would work out. Again, we're, you know, we're working under, um, the, the duress of, you know, having, um, you know, everybody in, in basically a form of family solitary confinement. And, um, you know, my, my hope would be we could define something. Yeah. And, and this is where superintendents have pushed back very hard against the state and against, uh, D E S E around providing solid guidance around what we should be doing in terms of providing support for students. And if something like this were to occur where it was a long-term closure, um, that rolled into the following year, there would have to be a wholesale change in terms of how we're going to plan on educating all of our students, um, throughout the year, including, you know, what might happen, um, in, in terms of the summer. So, you know, as I said earlier, I think everything is going to be on the table as we look at this. You know, the traditional 180, uh, day school year, uh, would have to be, um, looked at. We'd have to look at, um, extending the school day. We would have to look at maybe having a six-day school week. I'm not sure, but that, you know, those are some of the things that, you know, I've been, you know, kind of bouncing around in my head because I, I, I have had that same question, kind of shooting around, um, in my mind over the past few days.
Okay. So we still do have six more members and then the public. So, uh, member Atmar. Carl, are you there?
Yep, I'm here. Um, real quick, just, uh, definitely appreciate the questions, the thoughts from, uh, from all of my colleagues as well as, uh, from the administration within the, from the district as well. Certainly just one, just concern to share, um, from things in regards to the, uh, aspect of, or the topic of kind of consistent messaging and all of that. Um, again, certainly we want to ensure that there is a, that we are kind of getting a consistent message across the district, but I would hope that we would not go so far as to be overly prescriptive in what we are, uh, pushing out to our teachers and our parents and everyone in the district. And that, and maybe kind of the, the parlance that I would use most often is that like with what we're looking to do is like, we would set left and right limits in terms of, especially in these next, especially these first early weeks, this left limit, kind of the minimum of what we're looking for, um, some sort of engagement, some sort, sort of just communication with students so that they know that, yeah, that we're still out here, we're still thinking of them. To, and, and we want to, we're still concerned about their wellbeing. We want to make sure they're doing okay and that kind of thing. And that some of the academic side of things, yeah, we're not going to be doing as much as if they were in the, in the building from seven thirty to two thirty right now. But that's to be expected because these are extraordinary times. And then you talk about the right limit in that, kind of the higher level of things that we, we have, you have this range because teachers are going to know what their students are going to kind of what they need in that. A first gr- a teacher, a first grade teacher is going to be needing to, to do different things compared to a teacher who's, has AP calculus. And what those students are going to need. And so the level of kind of activities that might go with that, um, we don't, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want it to box us in where we're overly limiting what our teachers may be doing. And so, um, just kind of just food for thought as you're, as we're moving forward with that, that we, uh, that we're kind of giving the necessary kind of leeway so that teachers can really do what's best for the, the students that they work with. Um, and, and again, that's got, you, you figure that's going to be like a, kind of like a, maybe like a three-week thing where we're kind of, we're kind of in this gray state of, you know, we don't really know what's kind of going on. Um, but there are some things that we can control and the things that we can do, we should kind of do what we can about those. Um, and then I think these longer term. And then I think these longer-term questions on like what's the rest of the school year is going to look like. So a bit more of that's going to be driven down for us. But I think, I mean, in the short term, if we're proactive about, I mean, at a minimum, making sure that all of our students know that, yeah, we're here, we still care about you, still want to make sure you're doing well. We're checking in with you, we've got some other, I mean, because my daughter's in first grade and they had a little Zoom meeting where she got to just say hi to her classmates and did some drawings. And hey, I mean, that was great just for her getting to see her buddies. So, but that's, again, for that's, at that developmental level, that age group, that's probably about right. Even for the high schoolers, maybe, I mean, maybe a Google chat meeting like this, especially this first couple of weeks or so, that's, that might be something that they're wanting more of. But again, teachers will have a better sense of that than we on a committee would, even an administration would. So I think that would be my thought on it, giving good left and right limits and then making sure that teachers are able to kind of do the best they can. Don't need an answer on that, just I wanted to share those thoughts. I know we've got a lot of other, a lot of other things have been offered up as well. Thanks.
Thanks a lot, Carl. Appreciate that.
Carl, if I can just say, you know, you know, what we want to do is just ensure that, you know, again, teachers, teachers are autonomous, they don't necessarily follow, you know, the expectation is, you know, we want teachers to be individuals and, you know, we don't want that to change in this virtual environment in which they're going to be working. So I appreciate where you're coming from with that and thank you for that.
Okay, Member Silva, are you there, Asma?
Yeah, sorry, it was taking me a while to get myself off mute. Most of my questions have already been asked. It was around, you know, really continuing our education of our children, be it through special ed all the way to challenging our advanced students. I mentioned in the chat, some of our students really just enjoy seeing and interacting with the teachers. So the comment that was just made with the teacher, you know, Zooming, even if it's a five, six-year-old, all the way till middle school and up, some students just really are excited to see their teachers during the day and really get motivated by wanting to achieve the standards those teachers have set. So I really look forward to what Darrell, you're saying that you're working with the teachers and, and, you know, hopefully by the end of this week or whatever it is, to be able to send out some information of some really solidified curriculum to motivate our kids and not to lose that learning as we're waiting for this to calm down. But what I do wanted to ask is, I know you've said that you're expecting this to last a bit long. I mean, there are schools in California that have decided to shut till September and may reassess and not know if they're going to be opening in fall. So when you're talking to the teachers, are we not only going to be talking about the immediate situation we're in now till the end of the year? But to be proactive and say, okay, if for whatever reason, we cannot open at the end of August and we're opening in the middle of September or the end of September, is there still going to be ways where the curriculum is not lost, the kid's education isn't lost, and we're still going to be finding ways to start the new year, not just trying to end this year?
Yes, so. Can you?
Yes, I'm done. Go ahead. Yes, please.
Okay. So when we're, when we're looking at this and, you know, the conversations that I've been having with the union is really around, you know, how we can deal with the immediate issues that we're kind of facing in terms of, you know, keeping our students engaged. But then we're also looking at ultimately down the road, where we're going to be, where we might be. So, you know, I think having this solidified, making sure that this is done correctly right now will allow us to be able to come back and look at the long-term issues. And as you said, you know, there are schools in California that are worried about even, or have looked at, you know, what's going to happen if we don't open again, even in the fall. So we need to be able to be prepared to look at holistically how we might do this, you know, either as a district or as a state or even as a nation in some form or fashion if the COVID-19 virus, you know, has the effects that some people say it might have. So it's there, we're working on it. But it's, again, it's a little farther down the road for us. So what we're trying to do is meet the immediate needs and then look at what we're going to need to do. But, you know, I can tell you, we've already talked to the union about that. And we're looking at, okay, how can we support teachers and kids, you know, within the next couple of weeks so that we're establishing this strong baseline? Because I think ultimately what that will do is assist us as we move forward with this because it will be going longer than the April 6 timeframe. And we want to make sure that whatever we're doing, we're doing it solidly. So I hear exactly what you're saying and it's on my radar.
Okay, Member Smith, Christine, are you there? Christina?
Yeah, sorry, took me a minute. All right, so good evening, everyone. So thank you for your flexibility, adaptability and openness as we all try to figure this complicated, unprecedented situation out. There's so much for us to contemplate and so many of these issues that we're facing are not easy to address as we're seeing through our questions tonight. As we're also trying to balance providing education for our students and also considering everyone's safety and health needs as a community. Darrell, Bob, Brendan, Dan, Barry, Jeff, Christine, and of course Rebecca, thank you for all your work over the last week and a half. And thank you in advance for the work that you will do in the weeks to come. Margaret Barton and her staff are heroes to many of the families in need in our community. And thank you to Heidi Leahy, President of WREA, for helping keeping the needs of our students and the needs of our educators in mind as we navigate these uncharted waters. I hear the frustration of many of the school committee members around this virtual table. And I know that in the central office that you've been busy with the sudden closure. But I agree with what Lauren said, it was probably an hour ago now, but about the need, and others have said this as well, that we need to figure out a way to provide structure for our students while keeping in mind that families and the children in those families, as well as educators, are under stress that we haven't seen before. While we may want to provide educational experiences for our children, as many pointed out, whatever district educators do end up providing will in no way be on par with what can be offered in a school setting, at least not in the short term. Although Darrell, if you're talking about some long-term into the fall, at least over summer months, there may be time for training for helping teachers to provide other kinds of opportunities, obviously virtual training. But unfortunately, we can't provide that school setting that our kids really thrive in right now. And this is certainly not a time of business as usual. As I close, most of my concerns have been mentioned, so I won't repeat them. But I will highlight concerns that I have and have, that I've heard throughout this meeting. And they center on equity, access to technology and student and staff health and wellbeing. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. And again, I echo what you just stated in terms of providing a direct line of service for these kids and doing it in a way that is immediate and, you know, worthwhile for them and their families.
All right, so, thank you very much. Our next speaker is Member Weeks. Megan, you there?
Hi, guys. I really appreciate Christina, your comments just now. I thought you were extremely eloquent in what you had to say and really echoed what I wanted to say as well. So I'll be as brief as I can. I wanted to thank everybody in the district for their patience and their help. But I also especially wanted to thank the parents of our district. I personally am doing my best at home to educate my children. Let me tell you, 300 high schoolers are much easier than a third grader and a first grader. But on that note, I do really worry about equity and access. I worry about the use of technology being the primary focus for learning right now. I do highly advocate for some sort of paper packet being sent out. And I do really worry about parents who can't. I'm blessed to be home with my kids, but I do know many parents are hourly workers. They're on the margins. I spoke to two families today who just had layoffs come and are looking for work anywhere they can. I've spoken to parents who are doctors and nurses and are on the front lines right now. And right now, the emotional toll and stress of that really precludes them from fully being able to, you know, use an online platform or even packets with their children. Right now, they're just worried about day-to-day, keeping food on the table and keeping the lights on. On that note, my question really kind of revolves around social emotional learning and how we can provide those things to our families. Where many families might not be able to teach Common Core Math to their first and second and third grader, they may be able to benefit from things like the special teachers that are so dedicated to our students day in, day out, providing activities like different gym activities that they might be doing in school, different art activities, different music activities. So I highly recommend using those resources. At the elementary, but also high school and middle school level, those courses that kids take because they want to take it, because they love to take it, not because they have to take it. Utilizing those teachers along with the guidance counselors in your buildings to provide social emotional learning resources for families, not just for the children, but for the parents as well. And so really on that note, those are, those are my largest concerns. And I think Director Smith covered a lot of the special ed concerns I had. I guess a small question on that also would be not just the accommodations and modifications, but services like OT, PT and speech that we offer. If we have a plan moving forward on how those services might be rendered to our students as well. And so I think with that, I will mute myself again.
So thank you for those comments. You know, in terms of the social emotional work that we want to continue to do with our kids and our families, you know, as well as the related arts people or service providers, we're in the midst of working through that in terms of how we can continue to offer up different activities, different things that families can do with kids, but also ways in which kids can continue to feel as though they're part of a community, because I think that's the big loss that kids are having right now. So I know Brendan has been in contact with the guidance counselors. He sent out a really nice email blast, gosh, I think late last week. And we got a lot of very positive feedback about that. So again, we're, we're working on how we can ensure that that continues as, as much as possible. You know, and then in terms of the special education piece, Chris, I know that's something, OT, PT, speech, that we're looking at and how that might happen in some other capacity. But it's something that we're working on and that's, that's an area that a lot of districts are attempting to kind of develop ways in which we can, we can support families. Typically, those are the types of interactions that occur with a specialist that requires, you know, the person to be right there. So we're looking at other, other options for that.
Thank you. And I guess just on a follow-up question that came to mind as you were speaking, also looking at, you know, future plans for social, for the adjustment counselors and any students that might be receiving therapy services within school. Just making sure those services have some sort of continuity as well.
Yeah, and that's definitely something that Brendan has been talking with me about and we're looking at how that could continue moving forward.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
All right, Member Woodland, Lynda, are you there?
Yep, I'm here. So I want to start out by, again, thanking the administration for the communication so far and the notes that I've been hearing today. I think that my main comments kind of fit into three categories. So just to dovetail with what Member Weeks said about the IEPs and the services, is there a way to have, even if we cannot provide services directly, to set up some kind of way to chat with the SLPs or the OT or the PT or the school psychologists just to maintain the relationship that is so important for the work? Something like, you know, a five-minute video chat or something like that. I don't know if that's a possibility. I was encouraged by Chris Smith's comment about encouraging parents to reach out to, to, to this part of the school. But I didn't know if that's something that could be made available, if that's what you've been talking about.
Yeah, Lynda, that definitely could be made available. And Chris, you can jump in after this, but Christine and I have had conversations about how this might work in, you know, in terms of providing that support for families. Because again, when we're, when we're looking at either a Zoom meeting or even a phone call, what it does do is that it allows families to have that connection with the person that provides those services. And I think that can mean an awful lot in terms of how, the type of support they could then share with the family so that different things can happen in the household versus what might have happened in the school. So Chris, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
Darrell, I agree with you. It is absolutely our expectation that we try to get our kids in front of our providers. And we're going to sort of tear down as many walls as we possibly can and still obey all of our, all of our regulations around, you know, maintaining distance and what have you. But I think that our providers are eager to begin that. I think in some cases, it will be partnering with the parent while an activity is tried or a handwriting activity is engaged or an obstacle course is set up. Or maybe, you know, there's a particular language pattern that we're working on with the SLP. Definitely, I have heard from my speech department, my OTs, my PTs, I've heard from all of them. There's a lot of sharing of resources that are happening. But we wanted to be careful about what we were putting out there. We don't want to just send a ton of stuff. We wanted to send meaningful stuff, so we have been vetting stuff carefully. I wanted to mention two other resources when I think about equity for our students. I don't know if you all are aware that WGBH is going to be broadcasting learning activities or learning platforms from the television for our families who don't have access to internet-engaged medium that the regular old TV will be providing some of those opportunities. And that we are looking at other platforms. I know currently we use Lexia for some of our students. We're engaged with Lexia about expanding that outreach to get that out to other, more families. So there's just a ton going on at so many different levels that I want to assure you, these comments tonight have been very helpful and have, you know, reminded me that I'm not alone in my, in my broad thinking or in my thinking when it comes right down to the individual student that we're all sort of leaning in together and trying to figure out the next step. But in lots of cases, we are, as Darrell has said, on the, on the, just on the edge of making that next move. So I think that if we remember, this is just our very first Monday. It took an enormous amount of effort from central office to make the decision to close school. And then the governor came in and made a decision after that. And each one of these decisions that we make have to be filtered through so many layers of interaction before it comes to fruition to be a decision that then goes out to our families and our students. I appreciate all the comments tonight about thanking us for our efforts. But truly, we are, we, this has not been a vacation in any sense of the word. We are all working very, very hard and we're in it together. We really are.
I appreciate that for sure. I know that, you know, from at home with the kids and figuring out all of the schedules and how it'd fit, fit everything together, I think that there's been a new appreciation for how much goes on during a school building, that it's not just sitting in a classroom, but a lot more is going on. But to, to that too, one comment that I've been hearing a lot, from a lot of parents is about how much information is going out with the, with the links, that it's really daunting for parents who are not educators to sort through. So hopefully those kinds of grade levels. So hopefully those kinds of grade level directives can go out soon of just better guidelines of of how to filter through those like K through six or whatever those larger ranges are.
Linda, I wanted to comment that we are, we did talk today about trying to have some consistency in that platform of sharing information so that it looks similar across the experience even for families as they're, you know, so it's not necessarily, oh, go to Ms. So and so's homepage and go to Google Classroom over here and do. We're really trying to put those, even those choices in one location. I know Barry is working diligently on that. Like I said to Barry, he's become the, his office became the center of the universe overnight like that. You know?
Right. And thank, Chris, you're exactly right. And I I think we want to ensure that whatever we do provide moving forward, we're going to be providing more direction around what we would ask students to work on and families to work on with students. I think, you know, as a intermediary aspect of what we want to do, we want to provide opportunities for families to tap into some of the resources that we've found to be helpful. But again, I can understand it being a daunting path for those people.
Yeah, I mean, it is a little bit challenging to figure out where to go. I think that, just to echo what was said more on the earlier part of this meeting about the consistency between schools, I've heard all of these great stories about one or two schools with having like a Zoom meeting with the classroom or, you know, communication with the teachers and then kind of crickets from other places. And so I didn't know if if the committee can know, I mean, what was the communication decision? Is it through central office? Is it up to the principals? Is it at the teacher's own discretion? That's been a concern because it seems like there's been so many different directions taken.
So Linda, the point that we shared with principals was really around having a consistent message in terms of supporting students, if at all possible, through some type of communication, but not putting out information that was new learning. So one of the things that was brought to my attention early last week was that we still had teachers asking for assignments and work that was due and they were going to correct it. And I had a lot of parents writing back to me concerned that their children were under duress because they had to do work, they had to try to do assignments online. So again, what we're doing is we're looking at providing a solid foundation now that provides consistency as much as possible, especially at the grade levels. And that's been the conversation that you know, we've been having with the union is really having those grade level teams have some of the different items. And, you know, Carl mentioned it, having a basically a ceiling and a floor from which to work. And in between is really the area where we give the individuals the opportunity to make the class what they want to make of it.
Okay, thank you. I also wanted to just say, I had put in the comments about for the going back to the food providing. I think it would be worth our while to think ahead to the full fallout of what could be coming our way in terms of the need for district families. And I had reached out to Jim McGovern's office and they said that one of the Corona related bills that's working its way through and I it should make it possible for DESE to file for a waiver for districts like ours that don't meet the 50% threshold. So I was hoping that we might be able to have some kind of commitment that at bare minimum, we would do provide for the families as long as the school is closed, that we could try to do like a weekly.
I think Linda cut out there. I think she was asking about. Okay, there we go.
So, so Linda, we lost you for a little bit, but it sounded as though you were, you just wanted confirmation that we continue with this support service for for those students. And that is definitely something that we're going to do. As I said earlier, you know, we plan on providing food service support for as long as we're we're out of school.
Okay, sorry, I must have missed that part. I apologize. One of the other things too is looking at how it really came down to the superintendents to make the choice for school closures. If we're going to extend, and I mean, realistically speaking, I don't see how we can return any anytime soon. Is this going to come down to the superintendents pushing the governor's hand? Are we, you know, I guess what I'm looking at is how can we possibly agree to send our kids back when there are healthcare worker parents who would be potentially bringing, being exposed, bringing the exposure home to their kids? How can we open schools ahead of April, ahead of June, ahead of September? And if that's the case, I guess I'm just looking to to commend you for the leadership from the first set of closures and encourage you to keep thinking ahead and thinking big like that for as we move forward. And then the last thing is just looking at the shortages of masks in hospitals. Is that something where the school has masks, other protective equipment that could be used more worthwhile, you know, and more immediately in hospitals around in the area?
Sure. So, you know, the, you know, I know we have donated masks already to local hospitals, so that that's already occurred. And again, we want to do everything we can to help out our healthcare workers because we know there's a serious lack of protective equipment and, you know, we hear about that on the news all the time. You know, in reference to, you know, what we're what we're doing for, you know, prolonged closure, that does come down to what's going to happen with, I believe, the state. You know, I don't foresee this being a decision that I have to make personally as a superintendent. I think there was enough pushback by the superintendents on the governor at the time that, you know, when we had that conference call on the Friday with our commissioner and they told us that they weren't going to close the school, it was, it was probably one of the more pronounced concerns that I had ever heard from other superintendents around the inaction that was that was not taken. So what we want to do is ensure that this doesn't happen again, and that's been the big push from the superintendent's group with the commissioner, and that is exactly what the commissioner is conveying to the governor.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have one more member. I have a few procedural things that I want to give some voice to the public. We are pushing up to our 10 o'clock. So member Young. Adam, are you there? Is Adam with us looking at my list?
Yeah, there we go. I was clicking the wrong button. Okay, I'll try to make this quick, especially since I'm last. You know, I just have a couple of concerns. A lot of it's been aired already. We have basically the last communication to parents about the status of continued learning and all that was almost a week ago on last Tuesday. And it was the email that had the links to all the different possible enrichment sites. You know, students, some students have received some communication from some teachers with additional info or assignments, but you know, it's really, it's been inconsistent in its message and execution. So I know like my daughter in middle school at Mountview, some of her teachers have reached out to her to provide some additional options for her to look at or, you know, hey, look up this person related to math, something like that. But then there's, you know, their teacher that hasn't reached out at all and, you know, we can't even look up the grades in Power School because they haven't been updated since January. You know, it is just, parents are definitely going to be frustrated because, you know, different districts around us have done so many different things, you know. I know one district had the teachers go in last Monday and they prepared paper packets for all their students, including special ed. You know, I know a special ed teacher that had to go in and do that. Those were available last Tuesday for people to pick up and at least get them through, you know, a couple of weeks. So I guess my concern is, you know, we've gone through all this planning and discussions with the union. You know, once something comes out this week, is is that just something that says the teachers will be doing this or the teacher is actually going to be ready to execute that? Has it flowed from the union down to the teachers is my, I guess, one of my big questions. And then, you know, I guess the only other thing is we definitely need to look at the long term plan for this and we don't want to look at having this be a stopgap for a few weeks. We need to make it a plan to extend all the way to the end of the year. And then if, you know, things turn around and we end up going back to school before the end of the year, great, we're in even better shape. But we definitely need that. We need to be thinking in mind of at least finishing out this school year with what we're looking to do. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Adam. Yeah, you know, in reference to the question around the continuation of learning, one of the reasons why we're taking our time with this is that we want to ensure that this is something that will allow us to move forward for several weeks so that we're not kind of creating a packet and then creating another set of packets and trying to kind of replicate something. We're really looking at having a more continuous model for this moving forward. And that's exactly like the next step that we we are looking at in terms of processing where we're going to kind of look at our programmatic opportunities for students and how are the teachers going to have that continuity associated with what they were doing in the classroom before?
Okay, so we have gone through our list of school committee members. I have a few things procedurally and a couple of questions that I don't need to have answered, but I just want to put on the table. And then I have people have emailed me that I at least want to go through. So first off, procedurally, I like the the subcommittee chairs, particularly business, finance, and education to be thinking about whether they need to meet and to reach out to the superintendent to see if that would be helpful and what guidance that they can give. This can be done virtually as as we've been doing. Things that the committee is going to have to think about, if people commute, if they're fucking, that'd be great. Things that we'll need to to talk about is this committee will have to vote on calendar changes. The committee is going to have to discuss the budget for next year and any changes for this year. I hope the superintendent and Mr. Didi, I'm sure they are taking, keep keeping a close eye on our cash flow as we've been doing things this year and making sure that we're not paying for things we can't be reimbursed for to the point that puts us so far in the red that 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 is that is inappropriate. One thing I just want to put on the table, again, it's it's sort of a question, is in terms of, you know, every grade, every subject in middle school and high school is important. Some of it's more hierarchical than others, and I've gotten some questions from parents like this. So, you know, if a kid's in Algebra I now, if a kid's in Precalculus, if a kid's in Spanish one, if a kid's in whatever that has a two, you know, I would think this would be a good opportunity while there's time for teachers at the high school to be saying, if the odds are that we're not going back this year, how do we restructure the middle school, high school curriculum so that we don't just say to a year's worth of students, you're never making it to Calculus, you're never making it to AP Spanish? How can we modify the expectations in the curriculum in such a way to say, okay, you didn't finish Algebra, but we'll get you to Calculus if that's where you were supposed to go? And it might take some creative restructuring of the curriculum, and that's a lot of professional development work that we have to figure out, you know, can we use teacher time? How do we use teacher time to do that? That that sort of thing. I don't need an answer to that, but it's something that I hope that we're we're really thinking about. I just want to turn to some questions. The first question, and for all everyone to ask the question, not all of you put your name and addresses, some of you I know who you are, some of you I don't. I will forward these emails to the secretary and the superintendent so that they can be responded to as as we said appropriately for our usual public comment, although we may be a little slow with our responses. Christine Baez asks, if a child is currently taking Precalculus and plans to take Calculus in the fall, should she self study? Kind of the spirit of the question I had too. Will there be guidance for students who are, you know, planning these hierarchical classes for how they should be preparing? Non rhetorically.
So Ken, did you want a response for that?
It's 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 a parent question, so I'm just saying, will there be, will there, so Ms. Baez is asking, you know, if students are taking Precalculus and they plan to take Calculus, should they self study? Will there be some guidance given in the future about what students who are in hierarchical classes should be doing? Should they be studying ahead? Will it be caught up next year? Will that's something that there will be guidance downstream given for?
Yes, exactly. And that goes along with the statement that you had made a little earlier about the modifications that we would be looking at in terms of getting students from an Algebra to a Geometry course and how we can make those modifications within the curriculum.
Okay, the next question came from James Manoyt, who is a senior at the high school and has been watching the broadcast of the school committee meeting and had a question that they wanted to ask on air. They said, currently, schoolwork and learning activities are being offered purely for enrichment purposes. However, countless students are lacking the incentive to complete these activities and assignments and are suffering from a large loss of learning. While not all students access the opportunities, submitted assignments is impossible. Can students receive extra credit for the work? Much like myself, students are putting in countless hours to have no impact on their grade or are losing interest in completing these assignments. Additionally, there are many concerns over grades. Can students receive extra credit to incent them to complete these activities without hurting those who lack access? Thank you. And I think Rihanna had mentioned something about this earlier.
And Ken, that's a great question on the part of the student. I think that's definitely something we I would have to look at and that's that's to be determined in the very near future.
Corey Burnham Howard from 11 Osgood Road in Princeton is asked a question about students that must earn a passing grade in certain subjects on MCAS as graduation requirements. Is there any information on how this is being or will be addressed? For example, a student may need to take the MCAS physics test in the spring, but it looks they won't complete the curriculum for physics this year. And again, this is also a question that had come up in the chat about graduation requirements.
So that's that's another question that we will look at and provide an answer to in more detail in the near future.
Okay. The parent is Jeanette Apple, who asked some questions, said that first, thank you for the opportunity to ask questions. I read the letter sent up by Commissioner Riley as was sent to a teacher from another school district. The letter is vague and says different districts are doing different things. Why can't we use kids' Chromebooks and use Zoom or whatever platform the kids to learn? It is apparent the situation will go past April. I feel like school isn't being realistic or proactive about a plan to continue to teach kids, especially high school kids. We talk about equity throughout the state, but I know many of the schools where all teachers have reached out to the students and provided work to do. It's optional, but it's still continued work. Kids need structure to go back to a routine. Everyone knows kids will probably not go back to school this year. What is Batucus's plan to teach these kids? It's concern that waiting over two weeks to start educating kids is not acceptable, that we can't wait that long and that everyone speaks about special needs kids, but the mainstream kids haven't heard from teachers either. Although did note that other members have already made those points, but I wanted to make sure that they're, since they emailed, that their question was heard.
So those, Ken, I just want to let you know that those are great points on on the part of the person who sent the question and they're all items that we are looking very carefully at.
Another parent, Lisa Leleos, asked, as an educator myself, it seems antithetical to leave everyone behind for fear of leaving a few behind. Find out who needs paper materials and get them to them. Some high school teachers are giving lessons and others are not. That also seems odd. What should we expect? The longer delay on doing anything, the harder this will be. I think some of those concerns were expressed by school committee members after that message was sent, but again, I want to give voice to this person and we will respond to them. Darrell, do you want to add anything to that at this point?
No, I believe I've responded to that general question already.
Okay. Another message from Corey Burnham Howard from Princeton. message from Corey Burnham Howard from Princeton says he understands the issue of equities and related law and guidance. I appreciate all that Dr. McCall and the school committee and district staff are doing. These are unprecedented circumstances and trying times in so many ways for all of us. I do want to express my frustration with the lack of guidance from MASTES with regard to quickly implementing distance learning. I have friends around the country and even in the state whose kids have already engaged in distance learning programs provided by their school districts. I've yet to hear of any concrete plan being pursued by WRSD. I acknowledge, understand this does not mean that there is not planning ongoing. I do want to acknowledge that in my opinion, there is inequity in this discrepancy in approaches and implementation of distance learning plans such that all of our kids in the district are losing out. I'm hoping to hear tonight and soon a communications to the whole WRSD community what plans are being pursued for distance learning and timelines for their implementation. And again, this was sent earlier today, so I think that that's been put on the table. But Daryl, do you have a response to that?
As you said, Ken, I think we've already had that conversation.
Kristen Turner from Holden asks, what specific training has the staff received over the course of the last week to prepare them for online education? What training is planned for this week and next? When can parents expect materials enrichment in any form tailored to their child's class, not just a list of generalized links? When can the students expect daily check-ins from educators and how are students, how are teachers rather spending their school days?
So again, all that information will be forthcoming in terms of the information that we're going to be sharing with families around specific assignments and so forth.
And to her first question, has there been training over the past week to prepare for online education? I just think from a from a teacher perspective, you know, it'll be important that we we are providing this to staff, the professional development, they need to use these tools.
So what will, again, this week, what we're doing is that staff will be working on utilizing the time available to understand how to use items such as Google Hangouts, Zoom meeting. They already know how to use Power Teacher. So again, it's not necessarily around the technology. They all have access to Power Teacher where they can send out information through email. So that's really the the next step is really looking at, rather than the technology, it's more the the planning around having the consistency within the grade levels.
Jerry Hurley from Holden asks, says, please tell us your plans for the children's education while they're out of school. Thank you. There was a question about MCAS and will MCAS be more lenient for students in the following school year, considering students are missing so much core information?
That that would be a state decision. My my guess is that there are going to be a lot of conversations around how MCAS will play out this coming year.
There was a long email sent to me earlier today from a staff member about SOA. I think I'm going to defer that comment just so we have time to wrap up other discussions. But I will, I will keep that comment for our next meeting since it wasn't really a part of our agenda. And I want to make sure that the the comment gets the attention that it deserves. Those are the questions that I have. I'm sorry to people if I didn't, if I read it too quickly or if I didn't get the the gist of what people were looking for. Again, we still, if you want to send a question now to questions@wrst.net. Again, question wrst.net. We can continue our meeting. We will in a couple of minutes need a motion to be made to continue past 10 o'clock by our our bylaws. Before I see if a member wants to make that motion. The we do have an April 6 meeting. I'm sure we all expect and plan to hear more specifics from the district in the coming days about, you know, how this is going to go in very particular ways. We've heard a lot of questions tonight from from committee members that 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 need to be answered in a very short timeframe. I can also want to thank before I see if we have a message discrimination features for all their work. I want to thank Barry Sklar and Jay and Evan at HCTV for having the streaming on the internet. Again, this is an unusual time, but being able to have this meeting shared out into the public was important. And I appreciate that 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 was done. And it's, you know, through some hard work from from Barry and Rebecca and the folks at HCTV. And it seems as though we've been streaming the whole time, which is which is pretty remarkable. And I guess a model for what we might need to be doing in the future. So it is 9:57. We have I structured going through everyone, so everyone got a chance to to speak. I know not everyone probably has said everything they want to say. Not everyone's likely happy with the answers and and want to hear more. We can continue with our agenda, but to continue with our agenda, I would need a member to make a motion to extend the meeting past 10 o'clock. Is there any member who chooses to make that motion? Because we could have more questions or continue with the agenda. All right, one of our, one of our members actually made a motion to adjourn. So member Dennis has made a motion to adjourn. I'm recognizing that motion. The motion to adjourn is made. I would need someone to make a second. And unfortunately, if we do make motions, we're going to have to do this by roll call. So is there a second to the motion to adjourn? Okay, member Silva has seconded the motion to adjourn. So since this is executive, not as executive session, since we're all remote, that is there any discussion first on the motion to adjourn? Sorry, I don't have my little cheat sheet to see if if this is discussable or not.
Did we ever make a motion to meet?
I'm sorry?
Did we ever even make a motion to start this meeting?
I called the meeting to order. But there isn't, we don't have to be, I, we don't have to make a motion to call the meeting to order. I I do that.
I just don't recall during.
Yeah, yeah. So seeing no discussion. So the question was, without seeing the general front of me, what is left? Well, left would be if people had other questions, the committee reports, Simco reports, continued public hearing would be what's left on our agenda.
I think someone raised a question on, were there additional public questions?
Yeah, I'm hitting the refresh button on my iPad and it's spinning a little bit. Let me just go to the, let me go to the computer and hit hit refresh. Just a few too many tabs open. I don't see any questions in the hopper and I apologize to those if I didn't do, except the one that I passed over about all the SOA. I did identify all the public questions. They weren't all answered, though. So is there further discussion about the motion to adjourn? Seeing none, member Ayala. You can do it in the comments if you want and I'll read it. Member, so a motion to adjourn by roll call, member Ayala.
Yes.
Member Brown.
Yes.
Member Dennis.
Yes.
Member Godbout. Member Godbout says yes. Member Gustafson.
Yes.
Member Haber. She says yes in the chat. Member Haynes.
Yes.
Member Imber. Member Imber. Let me see if member Imber is still here. Member Kirshenbaum. All right, I'll pass them over. Member Lavoy. Member Long Belial.
Yes.
Member Michalowski said yes in the comments. Mills, yes. Member Mitchell says yes in the comments. Member Atmar says yes in the comments. Member Silva.
Yes.
Member Smith.
Yes.
Member Week said said yes to me in the comments. Member Woodland. Yes. Member Young.
Yes.
Back to member Imber. I'll deem that he's left the meeting. Member Kirshenbaum.
Yes, I typed it twice.
Sorry, I missed it. And member Lavoy. Okay, yes. Okay, so that means that we have passed the motion to adjourn. Again, I thank everyone for coming tonight. There's still a lot of questions. I anticipate that we will continue to hear them. Members of the public, if you're still listening, please, please send questions to your school committee representatives or to Superintendent McCall, and I will forward all questions that go to questions@wrst.net to the superintendent. Thank you for this evening and take care of each other.
Thank you, Ken.